Okay, I think we'll get started. Welcome to the public hearing before the Planning Commission on Wednesday, June 14th. We are glad that you have come to express your ideas and thoughts about the items that we'll be hearing tonight. The items that on the agenda are marked with an asterisk will be... They're legislative, so what we recommend will be a recommendation that goes on to the municipal council. So, the final decisions on those items marked with an asterisk are not final decisions. Those that don't have an asterisk are administrative and require approval only by the Planning Commission. Okay, we're going to start our meeting tonight with a prayer from Brian Smith, and then Maria Wyden will lead us in a pledge.
Our Father who art in heaven, we come before this evening as volunteers, members of the city, and citizens of a great community of Provo. We're thankful for this place that we have to live in, the freedoms that are provided to us, the care that is taken for the citizens that live here. We're thankful for all that we have that is good, we know and recognize that it comes from thee. We ask for guidance, that we might discuss the things in a civil manner and the best way possible, for the best outcome for all the people of the city. And we ask for these things humbly, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Before we jump into hearing the individual items, I just want to make note of a couple procedural things that we'll be doing tonight. Given the length of our meeting, we have nine items on the agenda. We will... Each agenda will be presented by a member of the planning staff. We'll then turn the time over to the applicant. We will allow the applicant 10 minutes to present their proposal, their request. If the Planning Commission members feel like they have additional questions, you know, we can certainly get in that, but no more than 10 minutes for the applicant to talk. Neighbor chairs will be allowed five minutes to address the item, and then individual members of the public will be allowed no more than three minutes. So, 10, 5, 3 is the time limits that we're working with. Again, we have nine items, so there's a lot to get through tonight. Before we move on, then, we'll just take roll from the Planning Commission members. If any of the members, Planning Commission members have a conflict of interest, please say so, and then we'll jump in. We'll start with my left.
Brian Smith, no conflicts.
Maria Wyden, no conflicts.
Debra Johnson, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Okay, we'll start with item number one. Scott Bowles requests an amendment to Section 14.38 to allow for larger signage in the regional shopping center, SC3 Zone, for the Provo Town Center Mall. That's in the East Bay neighborhood. And Aaron Ardmore will be presenting that item to us tonight.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So, this applicant actually came in with a building permit for new signage out by the mall. It was found that the signage would need to have an ordinance amendment to our current code to allow what was being proposed. So, if we can move on to the next slide. Right there is the zoning code for signs within the SC3 Zone. You'll see the proposal is to add a Section D. Currently, no sign can be greater than 720 square feet and no higher than 40 feet in height. That didn't meet the applicant's needs, so this D was offered as an alternative to that maximum allowance, but also regulated so that other SC3 zones don't start getting oversized signage for the development that is associated with them. So, you can see there, one of the main issues is the frontage along Interstate 15. To be able to go up to this 1,400 square feet and 90 feet in height, you would have to have 1,800 linear feet of frontage on the I-15 corridor. And then the third caveat there, that the sign shall be located adjacent to Interstate 15, that was put in there to make sure that even if you do have that frontage, that the sign is going against the freeway rather than any other streets on the east, north, or south boundaries of the property. So, Steph worked with the applicant to draft this language. We do recommend approval of it, that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the council for this proposal, and I'll take any questions if you have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Mr. Smith, and then Mrs. Wyden.
Getting back to my balloons, the people that live over in the Lakewood neighborhood, I'm wondering what the height of that would look like and what the light coming off of it would, might be like for the neighborhood just across the freeway from the... There are the freeway walls there, but, you know, without putting a balloon up and then seeing, you know, what that might look like from the neighborhood, it's hard to tell what kind of light could come off of that signage.
So, the applicant has drafted our... Done a little photo simulation here of their proposed sign at its proposed location and what that would look like from the freeway. As you can see, it actually shines north and south, perpendicular to the freeway. There isn't too many residences that that would shine on. Anything to the west of the freeway would probably not see any lighting.
Yeah, the only people in the neighborhood I can imagine that might affect are the people on the southern end of the neighborhood, potentially where the freeway kind of curves around a little bit, but it looks like it is far enough away. And then there is the power line park with the trees there and that kind of thing that might... Yeah, I was just a concern, a question I had.
Additionally, the current code has allowances for brightness for electronic billboards. Restrictions standards for how bright they can be in the movement of the boards.
Right, okay, thanks.
Mrs. Wyden.
That actually answered my question. I just wanted to see an example of the size and scale of the sign, so...
Great. Any other questions for staff?
Staff or maybe the applicant, onsite advertising exclusively?
Good question.
Sort of just want to hear it. Evening Commissioners, yes. I can explain more if you would like, but... Or the intent of the sign, if you would care to hear why.
Why don't we just hear now? Go ahead, we'll turn this item to you now.
Okay. Thank you Commissioners for being here tonight. I'm Scott Bowles, I'm the general manager of the Provo Town Center Mall. Brixton Capital has asked I present this item since the sign architect, Joan's sign, is based out of San Diego, who I've worked exclusively with to provide this submission to your attention. So, the purpose for this sign is where... Let's see if this laser printer actually works. It's not the brightest of laser pointers, is it? So, there we go. Okay, so, the original pylon sign for I-15 is located here. So, when the I-15 got raised and sound walls were put in, the visibility of the existing pylon sign, it's absolutely not visible here. So, back in January of 2016, when Brixton Capital purchased this mall from General Growth Properties, they noticed that signage was an issue here. I think it's safe to say that the anchors actually have very good signage. You can see that Dillards is very prominent, but when we look at two things with regional shopping centers, there's trends, which we don't want to discuss here, because trends is not something that really we want to get down that rabbit hole, because this sign's not a trend, this is what we're trying to address as standards for retail. When we're dealing with large, big box anchors, which regional shopping centers do, we have four. We have Dillards, we have Cinemark, we have JCPenney, and Sears. Even with Sears exiting, people who are now looking at that box say, one of the first questions they say is, "What about visibility in the signage, and how is the visibility of that signage?" So, you can imagine the difficulty in saying, "Well, here's our main pylon sign," and they see this little thing tucked behind a sound wall. And so, they said, "Well, we need to look at the standards of what signage is." And those standards have changed as technology changes. And Commissioner Smith, that's a very good question about brightness of that sign. And the good thing is, as technology has changed, so has the brightness of those. And I know that Aaron and I had talked about some of the brightness issues, and also some members from Economic Development, those were concerns that were laid out. And Joan's sign sent this very technical document to us and said that, you know, it's... There's regulators inside of these that measure all the types of wavelengths of light, so it doesn't produce too much light. It only needs to produce enough that it can be seen, almost at the same hue of what Joan's side said would be kind of like a computer screen, just enough to remain visible, because for one, you don't want a too bright of sign, because it's hard to look at, and secondly, it's wasteful. You don't want to spend a lot of money on electricity. So, for that, the applicant, Brixton Capital, said, "We really need to show that this regional shopping center is valid, that we can show tenants that we want to show that, hey, on this sign, we have not just a reader board to talk about events that are happening, but these blade signs as well." Because whereas Dillards is very visible, you may not know that on the other side of the mall, there's a JCPenney. You may not know on this far side that there's also a Cinemark, which you can kind of see right there, there's a Cinemark, but that Sears, their signage is hidden from northbound traffic, especially because of that sound wall that's there. So, it gives people an opportunity to react on both northbound and southbound traffic if they're not familiar with the area.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Bowles? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. If the neighborhood chair for the East Bay neighborhood is here and would like to address this item, you or she is welcome to do so. If there are any other neighborhood chairs in the city that wish to address this item, be free to come forward. Otherwise, we'll turn it over to the public. Anyone wish to address this particular item? Okay, we'll turn it to the Planning Commission for a discussion, and then I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I would move that on the request amendment to Section 1438 to allow for larger signage in the regional shopping center, SC3 Zone for Provo Town Center Mall, that we recommend a positive recommendation to the council.
Great, thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there a second to Mr. Smith's motion? Mrs. Wyden, thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Okay, I'm going... We're going to group items number two and three together, and for presentation purposes, we will need separate motions on both of these, on these two items, but we'll discuss them together. Item number two, Peter Mattson requests a zone change from R8 and A15 to R18, PD and Neighborhood Shopping Center SC1 Zone for property located approximately 1560 South, 1100 West. Their proposed R18 PD Zone includes 55.24 acres. The proposed SC1 Zone includes 4.46 acres. This is in the Sunset and Lakewood neighborhoods. Item number three, I'll read in right now as well. Peter Mattson requests project plan approval for an 80-acre mixed-use plan that includes 220 residential units and 3.84 acres of neighborhood commercial shopping center SC1 zoning. The proposed zoning is R18 and SC1. The property is located at approximately 1560 South and 1100 West in the Sunset and Lakewood neighborhoods. And tonight, Brian Maxfield will be presenting this item to us. So, I'll turn the time over to you, Mr. Maxfield.
Thank you. We've got several slides here, some will overlap, but try and give a picture, again, combining the two items together. The first one here shows the general location map where you have 1100 West here on the east side of the project, 1560 South that tees into the project, the Lakeview Parkway on the bottom or southern portion of the project, and then is bordered by Big Dry Creek that is kind of a feature down through this area that runs up toward Footprinters Park. This is 1600 West that comes down and ties into the Lakeview Parkway. At this time, there is an intersection here now, this is completed, well, at least usable. The full road build-out isn't there, but at least it does connect down to the Parkway at that point. In the staff evaluation, let me just run through these projects. We looked at... I'll point these things out. This was put in to show the neighborhood split. This one, you have Lakewood neighborhood on the east and Sunset neighborhood on the west. You can see it's really not that far from where Provo Bay neighborhood comes down, but see, it does, is overlapped by those neighborhoods, or overlaps the neighborhood boundaries. Sorry, we've got to do this manual here. This one shows the current general plan designation with residential on the project. To the south of the Parkway, you can see the agricultural designation, and then the current zoning in the area, which is an A15 or five-acre minimum zone. The eastern portion is RA, which is a half-acre zone, residential with animal rights. And then the next one. This is put in just to allow a bigger perspective of the area, and we can go back to this and use this if you have questions on transportation or other aspects in the area. This was the original submittal and the layout, and you can kind of notice the changes that occurred in here a little bit, and that'll show you the difference between the two. But the commercial area, and given as the three somewhat acres was in this portion on the east side of the project. If we can go to the revised plan, this shows, and staff talked to the applicant about doing this, pulling these uses up to the main street through the project. And so, the C1 Zone actually would be closer to the four, and I think in your staff report it has that four-unit, or, I'm sorry, four-acre number in there. And then the principal tie-ins with the road going through, and then an access out to Lakeview Parkway. The access to Lakeview Parkway was actually kind of jumped back and forth, let engineering maybe explain that later on, but originally, there was going to be limited access fully through the road. And then later, it was determined that there really needs to be some access points in between blocks or some other situations that may warrant that. I won't go into the details on the site plan right now, but I'll come back to that. And next slide. Okay, one more. This shows a larger area, and just again, to orient you with the creek, to show it's one of the most prominent features in that area, and is one that we've put in, that we feel a future Parkway could connect that. And as you put the next one in, that is the, I believe, the concept plan for the area, this submitted, here again is that Dry Creek with the proposal through this area, and then possible tie-ins. This isn't exactly how it lays out. What they're required to show is a conceptual plan that could fit in the area. An applicant, the property owners in that area, can come in and do something entirely different, but it shows at this point in time, something works in that area. And then the next one, and I think the applicant has more slides dealing with the project, but this shows kind of the breakdown of the areas, and then we have some that show, I guess, some of the product from the next couple. Summary sheet, and I'll keep this in here if the applicant wants to go back to that or if they have their own. And then the next ones, which showed the general concepts for two of the three areas. These two of the areas were geared towards senior housing for the most part, and the applicant can speak a little bit more to that. This last one shows the current study that's underway by Horix that's looking at the sewer line connections through this area that's referenced in the staff report. And so, this slide will be available as engineering may address some questions in regard to that item. If we can go back to the second layout plan, that might be the best one, if you can find that one. The... Go up to the illustration, if you would. Or go to the area concept, and that might be the best one. You'll notice from the staff report, staff recommends that the item not be approved, neither the zoning and the site plan. The one thing we do want to emphasize is, it's not a negative recommendation against the concept of the project, and that's not what's implied here. It was all, and I think we listed the three principal areas, dealing with the sewage connections, dealing with some of the revisions to the plan and on how that would go through the area and getting something that kind of addresses the concerns of engineering and planning staff. And then third was dealing with some of the concept on the commercial area, where the southwest plan, as you know, has been underway for a number of years. And part of that is coming up with more specific land use maps that look at where principal land uses would go. Among those are the commercial land uses. The concept, or at least the policies that were sent to you and then went to council and they adopted in concept, the policy changes, that one does get into the idea of mixing a lot of these uses and every, as they're doing in the site, trying to address some different populations. Within that also is a basis to have commercial throughout the area, at least where it's feasible. What staff put in staff report is, we felt very good that 500 West and 2050 West or Geneva Road would definitely be viable, they're on arterial roads, and that would be the highest traffic area. In this area, we're not sure yet. We don't know, in saying that, we don't know if this should be a commercial area, and in that regard, if it should then be smaller or larger. And it's one of those that's very difficult for staff, because without the whole picture, you know, we lock out possibilities if we do things ahead of time, you know, without really having the basic background for that. And so, those were... It was really the timing issue was the reason for the negative recommendation at this time. And if there are any questions, we could go ahead and answer those, or, you know, if you want the developer to go ahead and present and go from there.
Any questions from staff or Mr. Maxfield? Okay, invite Peter Mattson to come forward and address these items.
I'm not Peter, I'm...
Oh, whoever's representing.
Here in a minute. I'm actually Brad Frost, I'm the owner of Ovation Homes, and we would respectfully request some additional time. We've been working on this for three years and gone through 13 different revisions between planning and engineering, and it's hard to combine that into 10 minutes. So, we do have a presentation we'd like to go through and make sure some of those issues are really addressed.
Can you have 10 minutes?
For three years.
Yeah. And if we feel at the end of those 10 minutes, if you, if we feel like you need more time, then we can address that at that point, but...
All right, well, I'll just, I'm not going to hurry through it, but one of the things, just to understand, Ovation Homes, if you can go to slide, just go to slide seven, let's go to slide seven, if you would. We do active adult communities. They're all one-level homes. In this particular project, we've broken up, there's approximately 70, I think 72, that are one-level homes that are detached units. They range from 1,700 to about 2,300 square feet with two-car and three-car garages. The lower section are the attached homes, their majority of their triplexes, they range from 1,500 to about 1,750 square feet with two-car garages. We don't have single cars in those units. And if you'll go a little bit further through, you can see some of the pictures. One more. This is just a couple of our units. We've built over 100 units a year up in Davis and Weber County, strictly active adult. And if you go to the next slide, and go to the next one, this kind of gives you an idea of, oh, thank you, laser. This gives you an idea of what we do, and they're open, they're... We've got 16 years' experience of just working with active adult folks and learn from them, and at the end of the day, they're wonderful citizens. The traffic count is 60% less in our subdivisions compared to a normal subdivision. They're great citizens and contribute a lot. And one of the things that we've found in Provo, why we're interested in coming to Provo, even with the difficulties that we've found, is there's a large demand for seniors to go somewhere, and there's nowhere for them to go. There's almost 15,000 seniors and a very, very small percentage of senior living where they can go, and not assisted living, but senior product. And that's what we are experts in, and we know it really well. The other 67 lots are residential homes that would not be first-time home buyers, they would be for a second or third-tier home. That was really important as we listened to the West Committee, West Side Committee. Peter Mattson, who will come up in just a second, has 25 years' experience with Clayton in planning, with Clayton City in Salt Lake County, and has been heavily involved on the West Side Committee. We proposed on coming here last August, and we're in a meeting, and we, it was decided because the night before, one project was declined, that we should work with the city council and work with the West Side Committee, and Craig and Peter have done that for the last seven months. And we've spoken to every member of the city council about the project, and, you know, we were told after that was done that our project would have merits. Since that time, the city has changed their position on the sewer. We were told from day one that we could have a temporary pump station on 1600 West, and that was for about two and a half years. That changed about two months ago, and they decided that that couldn't happen until January of 2019. We are fine with that, we want to be a partner with the city, but we do feel like we need to move forward and get some direction, because there's been an inconsistency between departments as to what is wanted. For example, the road that comes in off of the main airport road there, that's been changed three times, which changes our whole plan in there. We want it to work for the city, we want to be a partner, but we do want clear direction, and at this point, we have not received that. So, I'm going to let, turn it over to Peter and get, go through some of the technical points that were brought up in the staff report, and we would hope that we can get an approval for zoning and for preliminary, knowing that there are maybe some contingencies or things that the Planning Commission might like to see in the next plan, and we're very workable there. So, I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Frost.
What am I looking at, time-wise?
Again, we can certainly stop and reassess and go from there, but...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's good to be with you this evening. And to follow up on what Brad has said about, let's see, this isn't going to advance it, maybe we can just go back to the, either the plat or that concept plan, they both have the same layout. Just wanted to address briefly some of the staff concerns and how we'd like to work with them in solving those. The access point onto the Parkway, like Mr. Frost said, has been moved a couple of times, even from very early on, back two and a half, three years ago, was requested that there not be an access point onto the Parkway, and we feel that we can accommodate that in moving it. Again, Mr. Maxfield mentioned one of the big... Mr. Maxwell mentioned one of the big issues for the West Side area, and this area in particular, is the Dry Creek drainage. And you can see, under this proposal, we've got an open space area and accommodating a trail on our side of the property where the creek forms the property line at this particular location. Staff has indicated feedback back to us that they're looking at the possibility that being a much wider corridor through the block than maybe what we anticipate here. But we're not sure whether that trail works best on our side of the creek or on the other side of the creek. And we're willing to accommodate a trail corridor with your typical cross section and so forth. But going much larger than that, I think we'd like to work with whatever may happen on the other side of the creek so that that can be a little wider of a facility, you know, not only through our project, but as it continues through the neighborhood. Also, there's been a little bit of confusion about, there's a 500-foot block standard, which the creek kind of impacts how we can do that. But this has been laid out in a general fashion to provide four connections to that larger block area to the north and to the northwest. Staff has recommended that we look at some other concepts through here. They have a concern about this road coming through and taking the curve that it does here, and that this ought to be much more of a collector road. Our concern with that is going through the neighborhood when you have an arterial road this close, that expanding that to a collector type road really does have an impact on how this neighborhood lays out and is joined together. In terms of the West Side planning policies, like Mr. Frost mentioned, someone from Ovation Homes attended each of those meetings leading up to the end of last year. And looking at those, we always kept in mind how our project might evolve and address those. And we feel like the mix of housing types is something to accommodate the various life stages is something that this project does and does very well. You may not get, you know, all of these folks moving to here and then to here, but you definitely get a very nice detached product here that has a higher price point, you know, for folks that still want the luxury aspect of their living. And then these are still very nice units, good square footage, but accommodate a little bit more of an affordability factor for folks that, you know, don't want to spend the $400,000 on the detached type product. So the staff is, feels that a combination of, instead of what we're showing here, a combination of R-110 and R-18, plus the clustered active adult is a more appropriate alternative than what we proposed. We're just over four units to the acre, and we feel that that type of recommendation is quite a departure from the course that we started out with quite a while ago. And I just wanted you to know that we feel that there's a, there's some inconsistency relative to those policy guidelines and that particular recommendation to the Planning Commission. Also, 1100 West being a collector road and Lakeview Parkway and arterial, a neighborhood center, you know, maybe not quite at the scale that you might have at 500 West or wherever the others may be along the corridor. In all of our discussions, you know, particularly with council members, the idea of a convenience retail center with maybe some small office and medical there is something that would serve the existing residents and the future residents in a very effective manner. I believe, let me look at one more note here for the commission. And again, the staff, excuse me, I'm used to saying staff because I used to be staff. Ovation Homes understands that we do have some corrections and updates to make. But the timing of moving forward on this project for us and the patience of the property owners that are involved in this is very critical to us at this time. And so we ask that we can address any concerns or questions you might have about what's before you this evening, get some feedback from you about how the commission feels about some of these items, and then hopefully move forward with your support on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant, either Mr. Mattson or Mr. Frost? Mrs. Wender?
Can I just wait till afterwards? I do have questions, but I'd like to wait till we've heard from everybody.
Sure. Yeah, anything else right now? Okay, thanks. We invite the neighborhood chairs from the Sunset and Lakewood neighborhoods to come forward if they wish to do so, to address this particular item, okay? Any other neighborhood chairs that wish to speak to this item are welcome to come forward. All right, open up, open this, these two items up to the, up for public comment. So if anyone wishes to come forward and address these items, they're welcome to do so. As you come forward, if you'll state your name into the microphone and where you live, that'd be appreciated.
My name is Becky Bogdan. I live in the Lakewood neighborhood. And some of the questions I have are, one, the appropriateness of the businesses there because Fifth West is pretty much deemed where we need retail. But also the single family lots, there's not, from my understanding, any type of really housing that they have there. We have problems with basements and it is a floodplain there. And I would at least like to see what they want to go into their single family lots before we have issues like Osprey. And the 55-plus community doesn't bother me as much, but the two access points with 200 homes, that is a lot to me. It seems like they need more. Like this needs to wait until other things develop around it so that they have more than just the two entrance and exit points. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Okay. We'll return this item back to the Planning Commission now. We can allow the, certainly allow the applicant to address the, you know, if there's anything about the public comment that you wish to address, or you're welcome to do so now, actually before we turn it back to the Planning Commission, and we may have you back up for additional questions.
Okay, I get 10 more minutes now, or? I'm just kidding. No, just to answer a couple of questions, because those are good questions. Of course, we're open as far as where, we originally did have two additional entrances on the side, but that was adjusted by engineering and staff at some point. We're open to those ideas. We've had layouts that involve those. As far as the commercial, we don't want the commercial to be a sticking point. We felt like that was something that would be beneficial to the community. We have people that are interested in that, and they're nice, very, very, very nice upscale convenience type, a gas station on the corner. But certainly, if it was a yes on approval versus a no, we would take that out at this point and work on that later on. Last point on the single family lots, 67 lots, those won't have basements. And so that's, we already know the water table. They won't have basements, and they will be second tier to three tier type home settings where you'd be in the 270 to 350 range. And that is currently, we have a letter of intent with Richmond American Homes, and we would govern, and very interestingly govern their CCNRs and what they put in there because our cottage lots, all the grass, all the yard, all the maintenance is done there. They're going to be, you know, 300 to $450,000 homes. We certainly don't want to have something next door that's going to detract from what we're putting there. So hopefully that answers some questions.
Can you stay up for just a second? I have a question for you, maybe, just to ask for a bit of clarification here. So in terms of the, I'm forgetting the term that you're using to describe the type of residents that will live here. Is that in a, is that in just a particular area, the area, the villas? Or is it kind of throughout, you know, both the single family cottages and the villas are all aimed, targeted at a particular demographic?
Really good question. So the cottages, the 72 lots, they're, you know, all the yards are done. There are six to seven, eight thousand square foot of yard space. They usually have about 3,000 square feet in the back. They're fenced from the rear of the home to the property line. Front yards are open, so it feels spacious. And that attracts, you know, we have market segments from 55 to 90, anywhere from, you know, 1,900 to 2,300 square feet. The villas are also one level, they're all one level as well. Those hit a different price point. They'll be in the range of 215 to 270 for folks that can't afford a $350,000 home. There's nothing for them out there. And so this product has been a really, really popular and good product for people that, they might be older, they don't want to have a big house, they might want to have a house in St. George and have a second home there. And so they're separate products, they're separate HOAs that would operate differently. But they certainly complement each other on segment types.
Do they target the same age demographics, the 55 to 90?
Yes.
And is that the case for the single family lots as well, or is that?
No, single family would not be, it would not be age restricted.
And what are the mechanisms that you use to restrict the ages? I mean, is it literally if you're under 55, you can't buy the home? Or how do you go about marketing?
Yeah, so legally, really good question. Legally, we can't do that.
Right.
And so we have to have, you know, there's a 20% scenario that if we say it's for 55 and older, we have to allow 20% in if they come. We've done this for 16 years. We have restrictive covenants that talk about how many people can live in the home at a given time. So if there's two or three bedrooms, you know, three or four people can live there on a permanent basis. Our CCNRs are structured in a way that 98.9% of our folks that move in there are 55 and older. In addition to that, we do have scenarios where there's someone that's broken a hip, they're 47, 48, or this divorced or widow, and this is a great option for them. Other than that, we don't have a lot of other scenarios where families move in. And I can't, in 16 years, I haven't had one, to be quite honest.
Okay, thank you. One more question, sorry.
Yeah, I have another question for you, if that's all right. So the things that you've seen that the city is, the planning staff have put forward as, in their staff recommendation, are they things that you believe you can get over, and it's just a matter of time and working through it? Or do you believe they're stoppers?
No, I think, I think they're simple things. I think there's just been so many varying parts. And I think the overwhelming thing in talking with planning staff yesterday, I really think the overwhelming thing is the sewer scenario. And we recognize that, we recognize that in January of 2019. But what we need to do is, because in September, HOROCs, is it Hoarhox or HOROCs or?
Hoarox.
Hoarox, okay. They're going to have the study, a preliminary study done, which will determine where that sewer will go. And at that point, we can move forward and really start honing in on a final application. And, but with the preliminary, it gives us a time and with the owners that we've been working with for three years to move forward. And so our hope was, was that we would get approval with the zoning and with the subdivision preliminarily, subject to an understanding that we need to work with staff on their items, which we're fine with, and then work with, knowing that the sewer utilities won't be there till January of 2035. 19. Just kidding.
Okay, any other questions on Mr. Frost's?
There actually are exceptions carved out into the Fair Housing Act that specifically target these, what we call, active adult communities, and do allow what otherwise might be discrimination based on age. So there's nothing wrong with this concept legally that otherwise one might look at.
Right.
And maybe that was your question, but it's, the Fair Housing Act conglates these types of projects.
Right, okay, thank you very much. Yes, your name for the record?
I'm Craig Jacobson. I'm the general counsel.
Okay, Craig Jacobson. Okay, yeah, Ms. Graves, if you want to say anything before we turn it back to the-
Yeah, for the record, I'm David Day with the Public Works Department.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
So many Davids.
There are. Can we go to the sewer master plan sheet? And I'll just kind of try to bring you up to speed on what the issues are there. I think it was in Brian's, Brian's presentation towards the end. So one of the things that we look at in Public Works is making sure there's adequate facilities for a project before we would recommend approval to you. And if you can, I don't know if you have it on your screen, or if you can look up here. This is a document, it's actually a pretty old document. It was our sewer master plan document that shows in the proximity of about 2050 West, which is Geneva Road, and about 1150 South. Somewhere in this vicinity, there was going to be a need for a sewer lift station because when you're gravity feeding sewer, you can only go so far, and you have to lift it up and then let it gravity. But gravity is by far the best option, it costs a lot less. So we had no plans on building any of that for probably, I don't know, 10 years. Of course, with the new road coming in, there's a lot of pressure out there. One of the things that's happened in the last, just this last year, is that we were evaluating some of the sewer on the west side and realized that if we put a new sewer line down approximately 3110 West out into this area, we could eliminate approximately five lift stations and gravity feed out to the west, and it's a more efficient design. So whereas this lift station's probably 10 years out, now we're looking at searing this whole area by, I think, January of 2019. So quite a move up in time and to the benefit of the current developer. That being said, we're under a contract with HOROCs Engineering that are evaluating this idea. We've done some preliminary looks at it as staff, but turned it over to a consultant to do all of the geotech work, the layout of the profiles, the surveys, you know, to get it down to the point where is it really doable? They're supposed to have that report back in September, as was mentioned before. Until then, we don't really know what to tell people. And that's kind of that uncertainty that we're at right now is if we entered into some sort of an agreement with the current applicant, I don't know what we would say. We would say, well, there'll be a sewer lift station somewhere in this area or maybe further out west. I don't know how you write that into a document. And so I think we're a few months premature being able to even, you know, quantify on an agreement what to say. I hope that makes sense. Do you have any questions for me? I think that's probably one of the biggest issues out here, is how do you sewer it? It was mentioned before that the city had approved a localized lift station. I know that never happened. I know that never happened, as far as I am aware of, so. It's always been, we have to build our master plan. That's the way it is.
Okay. And Mr. Smith?
So, in your estimation, searing down the north-south corridor there, does that eliminate the need to have a lift station? Or is there still need to be a lift station?
Yeah, so, so this lift station would go away, and it would be out further west.
Okay.
So, so their development would have to sewer further, you know, to the west. So, you know, you maybe add another mile of sewer pipe. And we don't, we just don't know that yet. And until we know that, we wouldn't know what to put in an agreement, like in a development agreement, normally pretty specific. And we would like to just have that comfort level of knowing, yeah, this idea is going to work. And there's some security there. Just, just one of the things we're dealing with is, when you get down twenty-five feet deep in a high-water table area with soft soils, there are some construction issues. And that's one of the things they're looking at, is can we actually do that? And so, when we find that out, and say everything comes back good, then we'll be ready to move forward with something.
How would that lift station be paid for?
Right now, it's being paid for by the city.
Yeah. Reimburse via impact fees then?
Uh, yeah, a combination of, of funding sources, but yeah, partially impact fees. But in fact, the, impact fees doesn't even come close to paying for a project like this, so.
Would it serve existing residents as well?
It, it would. So the lift stations that we would eliminate, you know, that would be a long-term benefit to the user. Say you throw out a number, operation and maintenance of two hundred and fifty thousand per lift station just to operate the power and replace pumps and, and keep them running efficiently. And, and you take five of those offline, you can see that over time, that, that's a major benefit to the city. So, we're, we're really excited about this new alignment. And we're, we're thinking that it's, it's going to work. But there's still that uncertainty that we wouldn't really know what to, to say in a development agreement if there happened to be one. So, that's, that's the, probably the crux of this whole area. And I guess the ultimate master planning of the area with the West Side Committee, and, and getting more down to a neighborhood plan, but that's more of a planning aspect. They can talk to that.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions?
Questions.
Oh, Maria, Mr. Smith.
In an email by the neighborhood chair in the area representative, they brought up the issue or concern of stormwater, going, too much stormwater and going into Utah Lake. Is that anything to be concerned about?
We always are concerned about stuff like that. But they would be under the same regulations as everybody else in, in Provo. And for that matter, probably the whole U.S., there's, there's quite a stringent standard for stormwater discharge nationwide. And, and they would be under those same requirements. That's just normal business for us, that they would have to have clarifiers on the water that let the water settle out any contaminants or can ta, or capture them. So all of that's pretty, pretty normal.
So untreated water would not be going into the lake? On the other hand, the plan that you've been looking at doesn't show a detention basin within it?
Yeah, that's, but we are close to the lake. And so, you know, the, probably the concern is there, you're so close. You know, if something goes wrong, you don't have any way to capture it before it gets to the lake. But that would all be part of a final design. You know, right now, we're more of a concept plan level for a rezone. And we would get a lot more detail later on, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
One other question, really quick. So in your estimation, that report's supposed to come back in, in September of this year. And what, what's the soonest you think that engineering could be comfortable with a new presentation? Or another, or the same presentation that you would have the, the right answers for, and, and that kind of thing?
Yeah. Once we get that preliminary report back, and, and that, that would be like a thirty percent design. So that's when you kind of flush out, is it going to work? Is it not going to work? And so, at that point, when, when we find out whether it will or it won't work, we would be ready to start thinking more detail-oriented and, and being in favor of moving forward with projects like this.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Not about sewer, but the parkway?
Okay.
I'm a little bit freaked out about the idea of lots of frequent accesses on the parkway. So, I assume that's not...
If you can go like back one, one drawing, maybe, I don't know how. Yeah, that's fine.
And maybe related to that, ultimately at build-out, are we talking like a four-lane facility? Is that what this will be?
Five.
Five, yeah.
So center median, which is just return movements. But yeah, two in each direction is full build. So, just, just the idea of laying out road systems on a arterial, like, like this road will eventually be in a higher volume, is, we, we like to control access. But right, right now, we have eleven hundred west to sixteen hundred west, five blocks. We felt like we could add one more in between there. I think it helps their project, gives them a second access, which they need anyway. And that still offers a really good spacing if there was ever a traffic signal needed there, so.
So full access?
Full access at that point, yes.
And you'd expect that to kind of be, in blocks or four hundred feet?
Yeah, so you can kind of imagine, these, these roads that are already here are already planned to tie, tie in. And then, other locations could, could be added in between those. But probably not more than one per, in between those collector roads that are already there.
So a thousand feet spacing? Give or take?
Uh, we're about four fifty per block. It'd be more than that. Yeah, it'd be probably about two thousand or so.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Jensen.
And this may be for you to answer, or maybe planning, I'm not certain. There was some mention of the Dry Creek, and that becoming a future recreational trail or facility. Could you expand on that concept a little bit, of where we are with that?
I guess planning would probably have to talk about the trail. But Dry Creek is a, a waterway that's used by farmers. There is a small amount of city stormwater that gets in there also. But primarily, it's, uh, spring water that comes out from further up above. So, and it does stay active all year round, so it's not like it... I guess Dry Creek's probably not a good name for it.
There's actually water.
Some of the farmers probably have seen a Dry Creek before.
So if you look at the goals and policies that the West Side Committee just got adopted to the City Council, there are, there's some language in there about providing open space. When you look at the west side and what's left to develop, there aren't very many natural features that would lend themselves to an open space corridor. But that is one that's pretty distinct and pretty obvious, pretty low-hanging fruit. The next steps for the West Side Plan will be to reassemble a new committee. And that committee will work with us, with staff, on a land use map and on an open space plan. We, as the planners, certainly anticipate that, that Dry Creek Corridor will be an open space corridor, trail corridor, in that next phase of the plan. And that's why I was raised as an issue in the staff report. No, it hasn't been decided as to which side of the creek the trail would be on, or how wide that would be. But if, if we can go back to the actual subdivision layout, the concept plan, if that is going to be a corridor, whether the trail is on this side of the creek or that side of the creek, it's not very optimal to have backyards backing up to it. Because everyone wants, who lives there wants a six-foot solid fence, because they're worried about security of people walking along there. And then that six-foot fence ends up creating blind spots and, um, blind areas, they pre, includes the view corridor into the open space trail. So, that's not very optimal or ideal. Staff has, for a long time, said it would make more sense to have the road come along here, with lots only on one side of it, so that there's a lot of continuous vision into that trail area. And there are places where people can park along the road and access the trail.
And that maintains the trail edges more of a public space, rather than a privatized, in someone's backyard space.
Exactly. So, if that is defined as a trail, then I think this West Side Committee will also talk about, how should the trails be treated? How should development take place along it? And actually have some design guidelines with it. But this just doesn't seem to be optimal for that type of open space scenario.
Perhaps related to that, the purpose of the, the parks that they've designed into the neighborhood, is there an open space requirement? Or is that just something that they're...
Again, the, the West Side Committee said there needs to be open spaces within the neighborhoods. There was a general policy. Fleshing that out to what that actually means is what this next committee will do. Coming up with hopefully a percentage, or some guidelines as to what we would want. Again, those open space areas, you're doing the exact same thing again. Those are all going to have six-foot fences along them, along all these sides. You're going to have blind spots in those areas. It's, those just are not open spaces that I think anybody on the West Side Committee envisioned when they gave those general policies about open space within neighborhoods. That, I just don't think that meets their intent.
In my mind, there's maybe a difference between open space and like a city park. Would the city anticipate some kind of public park space in a project like this? And maybe I'm asking you to speculate it, what?
If it's less than five acres, I don't think the city has any interest in trying to maintain it or take ownership of it. But there's also a lot of talk about a very large park facility going out in this area. And if the city does that, if the city's successful in that regard, I think the city will have less interest in maintaining even a five-acre park. They would want the homeowners association to do that.
I should add, in the PD provisions, it would require some open space under a PD. And maybe to clarify a little bit, we weren't talking about R-110, R-1A zoning in lieu of that. I think the question that'd come up is, for the density as a basis for the zone, what would be allowed under those R-18 and R-110 as a PD? So they would still allow the clustering, and still allow the, the same things. It was just a matter of, someone had asked, you know, what would be the equivalent densities for those types of development? If you establish that as a base, I think either one works. I don't think there was an attempt to, to try and say, no, let's rezone, let's hold R-110. So, just so there's not a misunderstanding on that.
Relative to the timing of those discussions about open space, and by two months, four months, six months, maybe to get to the point where there's something that could be used as...
Dry, Dry Creek could be designed relatively quickly, if you really want to look at it. Because that, that one is a bigger buyout. I think the problem if we, and there were some suggestions or talk about trails along the collector streets and some other things, that's more in-depth, because it involves a lot more of cost-benefit analysis, you know, as to who's maintaining them, you know, what their continuity is, and just some things like that. But I think the Dry Creek Corridor could be a little more specified within a couple of months, sure.
Seems like your options there are pretty limited, right? You've got a few key issues there.
So I, I think it's likely that the committee that'll work on these next phases could take six months. The question I can't answer is how long a process the City Council will want us to go through with the public, to take whatever those recommendations are, the next phase of the plan, back through public vetting. How long the council wants us to do that, I, I have no idea. The last one, it took a year. The last neighborhood plan took a year of public vetting after the draft plan was written. Because the West Side Plan has taken so long already, and because there's still a lo, long way to go, staff has been telling developers, don't wait for that. Bring forth your plan, and if your plan is, has merits, the staff will recommend approval on it. Or if it has merits, the City Council and Planning Commission will approve it. So we have told people, don't keep waiting for that, because it starts a smack of a de facto mortarium. This has gone on for so long, we don't want people to feel like this is being held up over that.
Any other questions for Mr. Day? I think it's done.
Are we back here, or are we still out?
We haven't officially closed it. If you want to say something real quickly, you're, you're welcome to. And then we'll, then we'll return it to the Planning Commission and start moving towards the motion.
The chair did walk in after you completed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, just to address a couple things. You know, on the open space and landscaping scenarios, it really is, it's a difficult thing. Because when we first started this project, Parks Division came in and said they wanted our whole property as a park. And we went through a year and a half of them trying to find properties that they could trade with us, and which they didn't have the monies, nor did they have the property to do it. And so, we've always been open to open space and making sure it works. We actually have peace across, on the south side as well. That's another twenty-three acres that's not on there. But it, it continues to be a difficult thing when you hear at a meeting opinions on open space that you haven't heard for two and a half years. And then that becomes an opinion for, you know, why don't you just wait till September till you get the study? That's what we've heard for three years. And our problem is this, is we've been working on this for three years. We've worked with the City Council. They've, they've enjoyed and, and looked at the project. And, and I feel like we have, with the merits on what Mr. Pepperoni has said, approvals and thoughts that this could be a great project. We've had three subdivision meetings, three different times, with, with folks in the neighborhood, and had positive responses. That's why we don't have a lot of people complaining here. And, but we have also have, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on revisions and time and, and people, and working with the City Council and the West Committee. And contractually, we, we don't have that option to keep extending it for four years. Our contractual obligations are to have a zoning preliminary, and then we have extended amount of time that'll allow us to work in the September, October realm, and wait for that study. But without that, makes it difficult. So we would ask, in, in consideration of that, is, is, would you be willing to consider an approval of the zoning and an approval of the preliminary, subject to studies that would be performed or analyzed in September with the sewer? And, and I know you can't do something subject to a zoning request, but certainly can on a preliminary level. And, and we would ask that. We've, we've put forth a lot of effort over the last few years. We want it to be a great project for the city. And, but we're kind of in a pinch to where if we can't, then this project will not be in Provo, most likely. Oh, it shut, no, it didn't. So, thank you.
Thanks. Neighbor Chair, I don't know if you feel compelled to come forward or, or not?
Yes. My name is Brian Taylor, Sunset Chair for, for, neighborhood chair for Sunset, sorry. I apologize for my tardiness. Traffic was killing me on the way south this evening. Traffic was killing me on the way south this evening. I've had the opportunity to meet with the developers on three different occasions with regards to this development. And we applaud the fact that they're bringing development to our area that meets most of our needs. The questions that are, that remain are the small units, the attached units. We were not in preparation for the smaller units, the attached units that were coming into our area. The other is the, my conversations with Bill and the West Side Planning is the Dry Creek issue. That is the only feature on the west side that would offer any type of open space for hiking trails or for nature trails of that nature. Where I work in Salt Lake, I'm right on the Jordan River. And I think that that is a fabulous use of a natural feature to build around it, hiking and biking trails for the west side. And it offers the opportunity for that. However, if you take a development and back that development right up to it, you're going to have nothing but hidden opportunities. And that's the one thing that we really wish to avoid on the west side is the confluence of problems headed west and being pushed west with opportunities where it's not heavily populated, not heavily patrolled and not well overview for that. The other issue was the egress onto the parkway. There was a lot of people that had a great concern with any access to the parkway that are not collector roads, 1100 West, 1600 West, et cetera. These are a lot of people that commute now on the parkway, which is absolutely wonderful. We really applaud that effort on the west side and I appreciate that. We welcome and are attempting to encourage sustainable development on the west side with the assistance of the planning commission and with the assistance of the developers. We are really looking forward to this on the west side. This is, I've been the neighborhood chair for 15 years and this has been an exciting year. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight. I apologize for my tardiness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I don't think so. Okay. I think we'll now officially return it to the planning commission where we can have a discussion. There are further questions for staff? We can ask those at this time and then we'll, then I'll look for a motion at that point.
I just have one maybe last question for staff relative to the design review committee. Have they looked at the, I assume they have the proposed elevations?
Which, oh, the building elevations? No, they haven't. So those would have to go before them with the materials and the other elements too.
Okay, so if for example, this were to eventually, that is the zone change?
Yeah, prior to a final, you know, that would be certainly a requirement. Is that where you're going?
Yeah, so they wouldn't necessarily be vested with what we're seeing tonight in terms of those elevations and that sort of thing?
No, unless they were building a development agreement as we kind of put that together, you know, wish they could come back. You see, in most cases, we have little packets or booklets that spell out all the design and the other details that would go into a development agreement and especially on a PD situation. Because they eventually evolve into their CCNRs. So there would be more detail that way, yes.
Got it. I have a question for the, the single family lots in particular. Those are, the request that those be zoned R18s? Is that right?
Well, again, that comes from the input of the West Side Committee and those goals and policies. Where the goals and policies say up to four units to the acre. I was in many of those meetings. I think Peter was in every one of them, Peter Mattson. I don't remember any meeting where it sounded very favorable all towards eight, 6,000 square foot lots. And you saw in your email from the neighbor chair and the area chair, that exact issue being discussed. That's why that has come up recently, because the West Side Committee just finished their goals and policies. Those goals and policies just got adopted by the city council. And that R18 and R110 comment is an outgrowth of those policies.
What is the, in the more recent developments on the west side, what have those been zoned? For the, kind of typically, not in the huge development?
R18's been the minimum.
And is that about what all of them have come in at is R18? In other words, is the majority of, are the majority of the most recent developments zoned R18? I didn't go back and look through previous.
Osprey and, it's not Scott's Corner, but the one that Alan Prince did, that was also R18, so. Those are the last two.
Okay. The reason I ask the question, I mean, I think it's been implicit or at times explicit throughout, is that I know that the neighborhood, in just brief conversations I've had with members of the neighborhood or limited conversations, I know there's great frustration with just the glut of R18s. And you know, the thing that I like most about this, this plan is exactly what was presented, this idea of a variety of housing products that could, you know, that allow people to stay in the neighborhood generally. I think the fear from the neighborhood, as I've understood it, and again, I think this has been echoed here, is that, you know, going from R18 to let's say the cottages or to the villas, you know, isn't really a viable option that, because of so many R18s and because of their size that, you know, there's a lot of people that buy those and then leave and then maybe they come back. And I don't know that you're imagining, you know, the exact same families always staying within the cycle. But, you know, so in terms of looking for feedback, and I know there's costs that you have to deal with, I would love to see something other, you know, something higher, bigger than R18s. There would make more sense to me. But again, on the whole, I like the idea of the project quite a lot. And I understand, I understand the frustrations that you've expressed. I mean, I certainly can empathize, sympathize with feeling like the rules or the kind of input is constantly changing. And while I sympathize with that, I think that the obligation that I feel as a member of the planning commission is to do, you know, what's best for the city and to take the time that needs to happen, that we need to make that happen and to get the input that we need to make that happen. Again, as frustrating as it is to you, and again, I think it's a legitimate frustration, I don't feel like I'm prepared to even offer the kind of, kind of even preliminary approval that you're looking for at this point. I'd want to see just a little bit more, both in terms of the sewage line, sewer lines, in terms of the, I'm really persuaded by the arguments to take time to make sure that we maximize the creek space. And then I wish that I could, personally, I wish that I could offer a little bit more to go on. But I feel like all I can offer at this point is, I really like the project as a whole. I love the idea of, you know, different demographic that you're reaching out to. And I think that does address some of the concerns that people on the west side have articulated to me is that, you know, we have all these R18s and, you know, it's, there's a very limited demographic and it ends up being very transient in the end. So I think that this proposal for the cottages and the villas, you know, addresses that in a way that I find satisfying. So I like the project on the whole. I feel like we just, I couldn't move forward given what we've talked about tonight, quite in terms of an approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to echo that I think that the project itself has good variety. I like it overall. I think that a neighborhood, a complete neighborhood strives to have some diversity within the neighborhood in lot sizes, in home types. And I for one, love the idea of having commercial out there. I think once we get, once Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec gets things together and there's a sports complex or something out there on that west side close to the airport, it's going to be critical that we have things out there like gas stations and things along that parkway. And I for one, living in the Lakewood neighborhood, would love not to have to cross the freeway to go to a, you know, convenience store or something, but to have something in my backyard like this. So I love the idea of commercial. In fact, I wish almost all neighborhoods had some facet of commerce in them. So I think it's a good thing. I think the project looks good. I think it's just a matter of timing. It's not, not ready yet. I think that waiting until the report comes back in September is, it is one more hurdle, but I don't think it's a difficult hurdle. After that, there, I think that things could probably fall into place pretty quickly. I agree with planning staff on moving that road to the outside next to the creek just looks like an easy change. You lose, you know, seven or eight homes, but you gain a lot more as far as access to that open space, which will be a kind of a buffer for whatever ends up going in on the west, to the west of that, toward the airport or toward the sports complex or whatever ends up being out there. But on a whole, the project, I like the diversity of it. I think it's a great thing. I say keep the, keep the commercial in there. I think it's important. But I would wait on it.
Any other thoughts? If not, look for a motion? Do you want to share?
I was just going to continue the dialogue on the timing of the sewer study being performed. That it is truly, it's premature to get into any kind of an agreement for zoning or anything else without knowing what the true engineering issues are with the sewer capacity and sewer availability in that area. And I would also, with the, I understand that the West Side neighborhood plan will take some time to get vetted and written and agreed upon and adopted and all of those good things. But at least the dialogue is happening. And it's important that, especially this area that still is fairly pristine in many, many places, that you do look at the few amenities that are there that will really capitalize on making it a unique place. And the neighborhood chair mentioned the Jordan River Parkway, that is truly a jewel now. And I'm sure 20, 25 years ago, no one thought it would be much of anything.
Okay. I'll look for a motion?
I make a motion that we deny at this time. The request from Peter Mattson to, for a zone change from RA to, and A1.5 to R1.8, PD and Neighborhood Shopping Center SC1 Zone for property located at approximately 1560 South, 1100 West. The proposed R18 zone includes 55.24 acres.
Second.
Okay. All those in?
Although, one note, she said that we deny, I would recommend changing the motion to say, provide a negative recommendation. If that's acceptable.
That's acceptable.
Discussion on the motion.
Real quick, deny versus continue. I kind of feel like sewer, I mean, I completely agree that that's something that we need to wait for at least that 30% design to come back, to see where they're at. I agree with all of the comments that were made about, you know, changes to the plan potentially. I really like the concept. It seems like we're on board there from a land use perspective. I don't know that it really matters, denial versus continuance. I mean, that would give the city council an opportunity to weigh in now also, which might be good.
I wasn't sure since we're so far out, about six months from having the sewer report, I wasn't sure, or the engineering report, excuse me, I wasn't sure if, to deny at this point and let them come back or continue. I'm fine with either.
If we continue, don't we usually continue to a date?
Got it. And that's far enough out that it's better maybe?
I think if we had more of a target, including the West Side Plan and things like that, it might be easier to continue and then pick a date.
Okay. I don't know if this is typical, but does it matter to you? I mean, I don't think you're going to get an approval, would, in terms of? Deny would be better. Okay. 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 So we have a motion, a second on the motion. Unless there's any further discussion, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It's unanimous. Mr. Smith. Okay, I need a motion on item number three as well.
I'll make a motion to deny the requested project plan for item number three.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Okay, Mrs. Jensen with the second. All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to items number four and five. I'm going to read them both in, I'm going to read both of them in together. We'll just talk about them together, but again, we'll need separate motions on them. Item number four, Brian Dab requests a zone map amendment from the R16, one family residential and RC residential conservation zones, the MDR, medium density residential zone, in order to construct a multi-family residential complex comprised of four existing buildings and four proposed new buildings on approximately 2.5 acres, generally located on the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection of 900 East and Center Street. And these are in the, this affects the foothills and provost neighborhoods. Item number five, Brian Dab requests preliminary project plan approval to demolish two fourplex apartments, one duplex and one single family home in order to construct 35 new apartment units located at 911 and 926 East Center Street in a proposed medium density residential zone. And again, those are in the foothills, foothill and provost neighborhoods. Austin Corey will presenting, will be presenting these items to us. Again, after Mr. Corey presents these items, we'll give 10 minutes to the applicant. We can talk about if we want more time after those 10 minutes and then neighborhood chairs, five minutes and public comments, three minutes. Mr. Corey?
Thank you. To begin, just with some brief orientation of specifically where this is at, since the noticing language might be a little confusing. Center Street, by this aerial, this is Center Street. This is the Utah State Hospital and Seven Peaks Boulevard. And 900 East runs north-south right along the west side of the proposed project. As you see on the north side currently, it is zoned R16, which is a single family residential zone, which is primarily the product type that's around there as well. There is an apartment complex that is just down to the east that's a legal non-conforming apartment complex. The southern portion of the property is zoned RC currently, which is residential conservation. In essence, that entitles the property to the density that exists at the time that the zoning was placed, which was in 2002 and no greater unless a rezone were to occur. There is a, primarily on the southern side is apartment units, fronting Center Street along here, there is a single family home that is directly adjacent to the property and then some more apartments that run along Seven Peaks Boulevard. The interesting thing about this property is the north and the south pieces were previously R3 zoning, which was a multi-family medium density zoning a number of years ago. In 1999, the property to the north was rezoned as R1 as part of an implementation of general plan policies at the time that talked very specifically about preservation of the historic character of the neighborhood, the single family homes, and trying to pursue some preservation techniques in that way. And so that property to the, to the north, including as well as that's when this apartment complex was rezoned as well and became non-conforming. It included a pretty wide array of zoning, but this property was affected by that zone change. And that was city initiated for the purposes of trying to pursue or trying to encourage more development of single family homes there. Property to the south in 2002, like I mentioned, was rezoned from the R3 to RC. That initiation was also done by the city. Much of those zone changes were done primarily because the multi-family zones that existed at the time were not produced. were not producing the products that the council was happy with. And so in an effort to prevent further encroachments of, of higher densities and multi-families in areas where they didn't want things, it in essence kind of froze at least that density cap and then set some regulations while additional, while new multi-family zones were written. As far as the, what's existing on the property right now, directly on the corner is the Van Wagenen Home. That is a landmark structure that is protected by Provo City Ordinance. And on the south side, there is a, a single-family home directly on the corner, a duplex, and then two fourplexes. Those are the items that the applicant is proposing to demolish in favor of building apartment, his apartment project. He would maintain this unit, this unit, and this unit. Each of them are six-plex, single-story, low-rise apartments. As I said, each was six units. So that, hopefully that helps give an idea of at least the basis of the project and, and where it's going. This is just a closer-up aerial view to help add that clarity. The, the additional apartment unit that's being proposed on the north side would be in what is now a vacant lot. There was a single-family home there some time ago and that's been demolished by the applicant. And that would be the location for the proposed eight-unit apartment to the north. So as we overlay the proposed site plan, again, you can see this is the Van Wagenen Home. These are the remaining apartments. The other items are what's being proposed as new. The, the general plan and the southern portion of this property is affected by recently adopted neighborhood plan, the Southeast Area Plan. Both of those highlight some specific guidelines and characteristics about protecting single-family neighborhoods, protecting historic character. Much like what was, what initiated that initial zone change back in 1999, similar language. Landmarks, because the Van Wagenen Home is a landmark structure, the Landmark Committee has reviewed this. And they, they expressed quite a bit of gratitude. The applicant has done quite a bit to the Van Wagenen Home to repair some things that were deteriorating and, and fix some things up there. They expressed quite a bit of gratitude for that. But at the same time, they also expressed a, a high amount of concern for the potential that the MDR zone could have as far as the impact, not only to this home, but a number of historic homes that are directly adjacent to it that are not necessarily being requested to be changed as far as their zoning. They, they recommended denial on that basis, so that's the recommendation that they're sending to you for the, for the proposed MDR zone, and that's primarily for the, the purpose of protecting the, the neighborhood character. And as they look at the allowances and provisions that the adjacent zoning is compared to the proposed zoning. As far as compatibility with the allowances that are there. So in just a short way of describing that, we'll use building height, for example. The adjacent zoning limits building height to 30 feet. The proposed zone that the applicant's asking for would allow up to 45 feet. And they felt like that was a big enough distinction that that could create some, some incompatibility. Especially considering that the majority of everything that's built around isn't anywhere close to the 30-foot maximum that's even allowed by the zone. They're, they're much shorter than that. So that's their recommendation to you. There are a handful of comments we've received from the neighborhood as well that have expressed a, a number of concerns. Primarily, most of the concerns from the neighborhood have come about the building design as far as height, massing, the location of the building, feeling like it's significantly closer to the street than it needs to be. And while that's, that's primarily related to what you have in front of you for the project plan, it also relates to the zone change in that the zone change is what's granting the allowances that, that permits the applicant to do some of those things that, that share their, or that has caused their concerns. Any of the comments that have been received prior have, are included in the staff report. There were three additional emails that have been sent in since the publishing of the staff report. Those were passed out to you previously or during your work session from Mr. Angus Cannon, a Sandy Otting, and a Herman Dutoy. If I mispronounced them, I apologize, and if they're in the audience, I apologize. But they, they have sent those in and those are, are included now in your packets. They shared very similar concerns to what's already been expressed. So as far as what you have in front of you and, and the proposed project, staff has analyzed this and they've highlighted a, a number of code conflicts. Aside from just these general plan questions and concerns that we have, there are some code conflicts that we've raised. The applicants disagreed with staff's interpretation of the code and, and the project is now before you requesting your decision on that. The first of those is the, the setback requirements. The MDR zone at a base level permits buildings to come as close as 20 feet to the street. And that's what the applicant is proposing to do. In the design review hearing that they held, the design review did talk about trying to, not just undulating the buildings themselves, but actually deviating the setbacks of the separate buildings, especially on that south side, to further help try to break up that, the mass that appeared along Center Street. The applicant has pushed, I believe it's, I believe it's another four feet. The building to the east is, is about four feet further back, so it's about 24 feet from the, the property line. The, the main building here would be 20 feet back. What staff has highlighted, however, is a design guideline section that the MDR zone falls under. So the MDR zone requires compliance with 1434, Section 285. And that design guide, that design standard specifically notes that setbacks in these areas should match that that are adjacent, the adjacent properties and are familiar to the neighborhood. The majority of the neighborhood is setback 30 to 35 feet. And staff believes that, that that's an important thing primarily on the Center Street corridor. Center Street has a pretty unique condition and it's pretty well-known. It, it's interesting because as you progress through Center Street, through downtown, or if you're on the east, or if you're on the west side, it has slightly different characteristics, but everybody knows Center Street. And on this east side, it's, it's pretty well depicted by very large park strips, somewhat generous setbacks as well, as we mentioned, the 30 to 35 feet. And some, some pretty substantial landscaping generally occurs there as well. So, so staff's interpretation and, and belief on that design standard is that that building should maintain that same setback as what's currently there. As we move on to the building design, we talked a little bit about the height allowances in the MDR zone. This is the proposed building for the north side, which is 39 feet at its maximum height, which is under the 45-foot allowance. But again, if we go back to those same design standards, it also talks about compatibility with adjacent properties. One of the things that is, that I think is well-done about this portion of the, the project is by stepping down that front, it certainly does help to reduce the perceptive size of that building mass. But in trying to, to still fit eight units in there, it starts to, it, it still becomes pretty crammed. But that is a nice feature to, to step that down, especially as it comes closer to Center Street. As we move to the south side properties, the the, the building fronting east, 900 East, and then the building farthest to the east of the project are three-story buildings, somewhere around that 39-foot level as well. The building in the center is four stories and reaches the 45-foot, foot maximum height requirement. This is just a blow-up of one of the elevations to try to get a little more detail in there. As far as the mass and scale features that are required in those design standards, it talks a lot about meeting similar building forms that are in the area. Much of the apartments that exist and the larger buildings that exist in the area follow this courtyard style. And the perceptive mass of that, especially from the view of Center Street, is a, a much smaller perceptive mass because you place the mass of the building to the back, you have some extrusions that come out, but the, the actual width that's approached on the street is similar in scale at least to a single-family home or, you know, maybe even a small duplex or something like that. So it does well in reducing that mass. Staff's concern with the proposal, the way that it is, is, is the long expanses and placing the mass parallel to Center Street, the way that the applicant has done, doesn't, it, it really places most everything right in front of you, which is a very appropriate thing to do in an urban setting. But our concerns are about the, the specific location that it's at and its ability of speaking to the same language that exists around in the area. So again, going to building mass and scale to try to help this be more perceptible, we put together a handful of just massing diagrams to show what the proposal is compared to what exists on the street. So this is the existing site looking to the southeast from the center of the intersection. The greenish-gray colored home you see there is the, the single-family home that currently exists on the northwest corner of the southern property. And Mr. Dab's proposal is, so this gives an idea of the increase or the decrease of the setback and the effect that the increased height all has on the area. This view shows you the yellow house to the west. That is the, well, it's actually to the east, but on the left-hand side of your screen, that's the, the home that would remain on the southern property. That's owned by a different property owner. The red brick building there is, that's one of the fourplexes that would be demolished. And then Mr. Dab's proposal. So then moving on to the north side, this is the historic Van Wagenen Home. That's about a 35-foot setback that it has, and it's one of the taller structures actually in the area. And then with the proposed structure to the north as it is proposed by the applicant. Yeah, sorry, to the east. Thank you. So hopefully that gives at least a, a brief rundown. The only other things to highlight as far as code compliance issues, one is parking. The south side is compliant under our parking ordinance with the number of units that are being proposed. With the, with the concerns about form enassing and the, the need to possibly push that building back or redesign it into a different form, there is a high likelihood that that would eat into that parking that's in there. Though the location of it being centralized and behind the buildings is definitely a very good thing. As far as the north side, it's currently shy one stall with the proposal. And that's based on calculating the Van Wagenen Home as a single-family home. However, by rezoning the Van Wagenen Home for MDR zoning, that would allow what is currently a four-bedroom home to be used as a four-bedroom apartment. So it would fall under a different zoning standard. And as such, the parking supplied on the north would be shy four stalls from the, the city ordinance. In the same aspects, one of the concerns that had been raised was about the density. The by rezoning the, the Van Wagenen Home, that allows you to use the entire property in the density calculations. If, if the proposal, if the proposed building on the north side were to go in just on the lot that existed there and it was only, and it was only that that was zoned MDR and the Van Wagenen Home was left alone, it would actually be in excess of the density requirements. But by including it, it falls significantly under. It comes in at about 17 and a half units to the acre. The south side has a similar characteristic by using those existing low-rise apartments. The, the north side is able to achieve, the north side of the south property is able to achieve a, a little bit higher density. So there is some talk in the staff report about the balance of density. That's what that reference is to. The other, the other only outstanding code issue is amenity space. But it's one that is required currently. The applicant's providing about 50% of the required amenity space. And with what's being proposed, there would have to be some give somewhere in the square footage or in the unit count. Or they'd have to lose parking stalls in favor of landscaped areas. You know, you can see that there's a number of things that we, we just feel would require a significant enough change to the design that staff's concern is that any of those changes to correct it and bring it in compliance would change the project substantially from what you're viewing. And so as such, we'd recommend that you deny the zone change request and that you deny the project plan. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Thorough presentation of these two items. Are there any questions for Mr. Corey or staff at this time? Okay. Invite the applicant, Brian Dab, to come forward and address these two items. We'll set the timer at 10 minutes and get at, at the end of the time, if we feel like we have, we want to hear more, have more questions, we're, we'll make that decision at that point.
My name is Stephen Isaacson. I work for the Architectural Coalition Gilrand. I'm a project manager and a architectural drafter. This project hits really close to home for me, especially because I live in the Peaks Apartments. I've lived there for about four years, so it's on the same site. I've handed you a packet that contains some renderings or some drawings of the actual perception of this new building. If you'd like to, on the files that I, I gave you, that blue flash drive, there's, in the in the renderings folder, there's those renderings, if you could pull those up and, thank you. This project, we've been working on for just over two years, and we've gone through four different reviews with planning and a couple reviews with the Design Review Committee. I would like to note that we have received approval from the Design Review Committee. We, we made great challenges and we made great efforts to make this look like the Van Wagner home in design with different windows and materials. We've placed double columns and made the entrances towards the beginning and so that the buildings are broken up. As you can see, that it, the perception is, is not just a big white mass for a building. It is, it blends very well in with the community. I did these renderings just showing the existing trees that are already there. We're also required to put nine trees along Center Street and eleven trees along Ninth East, so it will be very much covered with trees as well. We've had three different meetings with Austin Corey, face-to-face, sitting down, and he's been very respectful and very willing to work with us on this project. Each different meeting, he's brought up new items that we need to consider. Originally, we were planning for this to be the multi-residential medium-density zone, and the setbacks were, we were told were twenty feet, and so that's what all our designs were planned around. We were just, in the very last review he gave us, we, it was mentioned that these need to be thirty feet setback to match some of the other existing buildings. The site plan there, right behind our buildings on Fifty is South, there's that big church back there. To the east, towards the mountain, there's a very big apartment complex, three, three stories, and, and I feel like Ninth East is just full of apartment complex, big, big ones going up. I'm a BYU student and I know the value of a good apartment. We've done landscaping plans and utility plans and parking plans, and we've moved around our site many times so that we can, we can try to find ways of making this work. What we hope tonight is that we can get an approval for this project, seeing that it is a, a new apartment complex and seeing those elevations, how they really will work, or at least an approval with some conditions or some, some new ideas. The, the ideas for fixing this project was that we demolish all the three existing buildings at the bottom and place all of our apartments on Fifty South and leave Center Street alone. But though, that suggestion was pretty much the only suggestion we were given and isn't very feasible for, for the owner. There, considering there is apartments there right now that are older apartments, it would be a very good improvement on the community. And I'd like to turn the time over to Brian.
I appreciate your time and, I appreciate you being here today. I realize that no matter where I propose this in the city, I probably still be the people, nobody wants to see an increase in density. I'm not coming into this trying to change something that came from... You know, nowhere. I've been the property owner here for eighteen years. As Austin said, a lot of these zone changes happened after we were already there. Just for a point of clarification, it's actually the home on the corner that is the duplex, and this is the single-family home. As you saw from the renderings that Stephen has prepared, these aren't just great big white masses that are going to, you know, overshadow everything else. They are actually attractive. We did have Design Review go through this. We did get an approval from them. It has been a little bit of a challenge, though. We were asked at the very beginning of this to actually bring the MDR to propose it. At that point, it hadn't even have been adopted two years ago. And, you know, we chose not to do that, but we did wait until the MDR was adopted by the city, and I believe it's the best fit for this. Almost everything here that we've talked about, these, 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 these here, these here, these here, these up here, even the triplex here and here on the opposite If you do the math, they run somewhere right around twenty units per acre. I'm not set on trying to get every last unit in there. The reason we went to the fourth story is the requirement that we found that we were lacking in amenity space. So knowing that we had nine floors of apartments, we put one floor of amenity space in. Other places have chosen to take that amenity space and put it on the roof, or, you know, as a barbecue area or other things, we chose to put it in as a floor. If that's the contention, you know, we could certainly look at, you know, changes there. We know that population is not going down. We're told, if you read the mayor's blog or a number of any others, that we expect probably a doubling in population in the next twenty years. If that's the case, where are your kids, my kids, my grandkids going to live? I'm proposing that a home that is no longer structurally sound be replaced. We did had, have to take down a little eighteen-nineties adobe home because it was not structurally sound. When we acquired it, nobody had lived in it for over twenty years because the floors had dropped right down onto the dirt. Would love to be able to do some things, replace some buildings that are uninsulated, they're brick and block, fire-cut studs, which means fire, earthquake, they come down. The little duplex on the corner right now, although it's attractive, it's not stable. It's a rock foundation. It's had additions where somebody put rooms in the attic but didn't do it right. Eventually, that house will come down, whether it's through this process or another. I would ask that if, for some reason, the project plan cannot be approved, that at least the zoning be approved so that we could work with staff to try to get a project. They mentioned that they'd like to see setbacks changed. We had no idea of that until this last week. The home that was taken out on this empty lot actually set eighteen feet back from the sidewalk. It was there in eighteen ninety. They can't tell me that it's, you know, not unheard of. I've actually walked down Center Street this last week from University to Ninth East, and I can find a home that is at the twenty-foot setback in every block. There's also at least a duplex or an apartment in every block. So to say that it doesn't fit, you know, doesn't make sense. Would love to make a project that everybody's happy with, but I realize that by proposing an increase in density, we're going to upset most. I appreciate your consideration. If you've got questions, I'd love to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Dab. Any, any quick questions for applicant before he sits down? Okay. I mean, it may be, be just worth noting that the Planning Commission is, from my experiences with past proposals, certainly not, you're, you're not upsetting us by proposing more dense. You know, I think you might, might be misreading us a little bit in terms of, of course, we want to do density in the right places and...
I'm not stating that you personally, the Planning Commission, but neighborhoods in general. But we cross the corners of four neighborhoods here. We're in the northwest corner of Provost, but we've kind of been the rotten stepchild because we're isolated from most of the neighborhood by this large church house and the state hospital. Mazer here, we're four-story apartment buildings here between us and most of the neighborhood. Joaquin, the park buffers most of it. Foothill, yes, they've, would take the brunt of things, but I do believe this is the appropriate place. If we talk about where should density go, arterial, arterial roads, collectors, we know that Seven Peaks Boulevard will eventually tie into fourteen-fifty, and that's going to end up being an east-side collector that brings all of that traffic right here on Center Street again.
Right.
So our proposal takes the driveways that currently back out onto Center Street and on Ninth East and eliminates those from that busy intersection. But, you know, we would be amenable to looking at other options, but right now, we're, we're kind of chasing a moving target. We're asked to bring a full project plan approval process, which means floor plans, elevations, everything else, and we don't even know what we're designing for. We're still asking for a zoning that would have our criteria. The criteria that is listed is twenty feet. Now, if twenty feet is not appropriate, we just need to know that. But if we look at current projects that have just recently been approved, that are multi-unit housing, you know, the transit-oriented housing here on Fourth West and Fourth South, we don't even have twenty-foot setbacks there. They're less than. If we look at Provost Housing Authority on the corner where the old St. Francis, both setbacks on that are, one's twelve, one's eighteen. I'd just love to get some direction if, but it seems that we're always cart in front of the horse. We're always still trying to figure out what we're designing to. As you heard from the architect, you know, we've gone through revision after revision, but even after we had Design Review approval, you know, then we go back and staff says, "Well, it really ought to be all brick." And I'm saying, "Well, okay, that's not what we got from Design Review. How do we adjust for that now?" We've spent tens of thousands of dollars putting plans together and trying to get, you know, to this point, but until we can get the horse out in front of the cart, you know, we're still not sure where to design to.
Thank you. I understand your frustrations. Okay, we'll invite the neighborhood chairs for the...
I just have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wood.
How many bedrooms are in these apartments?
So they are proposed as one- and two-bedroom apartments. The thirty-two units that we currently rent in this location are one- and two-bedroom apartments. I can't count the number of people who want in, but I can't offer anything to, so...
Thank you.
Invite the neighborhood chairs for the Foothills and Provost Neighborhoods to come forward if they're here.
Stephen Taylor, Foothills Neighborhood. I understand Brian's frustration. He and I have been working back and forth on this project, what is it now, seven years, six years, something like that? And it is a slow process. It's also interesting to note that as this project, as news of this project spreads that more and more comments come in after we've tried to hold neighborhood meetings and things like that, people still calling in and, and commenting, I would say that virtually all of the comments that I have received and discussions I have had with my neighbors would concur with all of the decisions staff has made on, on this project and for similar reasons. Probably our greatest fear in this project is the zoning change because this new zone allows for much more in the way of building than Brian is, is, is offering to us tonight. And you all know of the huge mistake Provo made with the building on Seventh North and Ninth East, which is legal, okay? It is legal under the campus high density, but it is not moral. It is, it is a foot from the sidewalk and goes up six feet, six stories, and, and people just, in my neighborhood, just, just, just chew me constantly for letting that happen. We went through seven different developers, I said. We met with three of them that came and, and did a proposal, but I think by the time they got it built with the ride-away problems and things there, I think it was the seventh developer that came in and threw up a OSB tin-covered, well, you've seen it, okay? And so this is the thing that, that we are most concerned with in, in the Foothills Neighborhood is, is to see a zone change begin, and then if a developer comes in, buys those little houses up behind that zone, and then they come in and say, "We want to zone this," and it just moves and it spreads. In fact, a proposal crossed my desk, my, my, was mailed to me on a proposal for the Park Plaza existing apartment house, which is just right there by the power station just south of Wasatch School. And they're going to knock down the front unit of that development and put up a six-story just like across the street, right on the sidewalk, and then put a parking structure behind it, which is commendable, that they're going to include enough parking, but they have to have this six-story building in the front on the street side in order to cover that parking terrace. And, and we do not, do not want to get that started in our neighborhood. We do not want that kind of density. Across Ninth East, we'd like to keep it family dwellings mainly. It's been a great neighborhood, and I can, I can name so many people that have come up and said, "Oh yeah, we used to live in that neighborhood," you know, when they were in school or when they were young families, and, and it is an ideal location. Quanis Park is a mess right now, but we've been reassured that that's going to be straightened out and be lovely someday if we can stand the dust and the rumbling. So our, our, the, the, the feeling I get from virtually everybody that I've talked to, and it's by no means all of them, but certainly the ones concerned, would be to support recommendations of staff and to absolutely not entertain any sort of zone change in that northeast quadrant. Thank you.
Thank you. It's the neighborhood chair from the Provost Neighborhood.
Richard Holmes, Provost Neighborhood Chair. The feeling, the response that I've received in our neighborhood has been mainly positive to this proposal. The apartments are already there, and it, it seems to be an improvement in appearance. Some of the concerns have, a few concerns with the building height that, that should be compatible with the, with the buildings adjacent. I'm a little concerned with the setback as well, but then realized there is quite a, a wide parking strip along Center Street in front of that project. So, so it's not a big issue. We did, we've had a couple of neighborhood meetings, one, both combined with Foothill Neighborhood. First one was, I think, two or three years ago, when this project started, and that was kind of a preliminary thing. We had one, again, in... We had one again in March. It was not well-attended. There were 16 people there total. I don't know what to read into that, if that's, the people are not that concerned about it or what, but I put a notebook on the table, asked people to write down their comments. We got three comments. One said that we need another meeting in a different building because it was a Provost School and that's under construction, so the parking was difficult. The other said, "It looks like it's going to improve the look of the area. Good luck." The third one said, "Looks good, thanks." And so as far as response from neighbors, it's been positive. I haven't really had any negative other than possibly building height, just to look at that in conjunction with the adjacent properties. Austin mentioned that we just finished the southeast area design plan. I was a member of the citizen advisory committee for that. When we discussed this property as part of that committee, we recommended that this property, at least the part in the Provost Neighborhood, receive an M.D., medium-density zoning. We asked, since it was residential conservation, since we're doing the plan for the area right now, why don't we decide what zone we want that to be? City staff chose not to do that and to leave that in place, but the design committee was favorable to the, to this project as well, at least on the south side of Center Street that's part of the Provost Neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open up, unless there are any other neighborhood chairs beyond the Foothills and Provost Neighborhoods that wish to speak, we'll open this up to public comment. Again, we have three minutes for public comments.
So my name's Norm Thurston. I live at 965 East Center Street, and I wish I had time to correct all of the things that Mr. Dab misspoke about, I assume is misspeaking, but that's been our frustration all along, is that there's always been a lot of misspeaking. I misspoke, including in their drawing. They showed that a 39-foot building is the same height as a 25-foot house, and that's the architect that's doing that. And that's one of our frustrations, is we go to neighborhood meetings and we see drawings, and we're told, "This building will be the same size as the house next door." And then you look at the statistics, and it's 39 feet tall, and that's just the one next to it, it's 47 feet tall, the one just halfway down next to a 24-foot house. And that's been our frustration. With regards to the neighbors, I've been spending a lot of time talking to individual neighbors. We have the signatures here of 60 residents of our neighborhood, the four neighborhoods. Apparently Mazer and Provost, or Mazer and Joaquin didn't get invited, and so they weren't there. I went and talked to Mazer and Joaquin, they didn't even know about it. 60 people signing a petition to oppose that, I can leave that with staff. But I just want to, I don't know, did, Austin, did they have a copy of this? Yeah, so in the staff report, one of the problems is that people just want to look at just this. They're showing you images that are just this. Look what's around it. All of those green dots are single-family homes. So while there is some apartment complex, there are, in part, by the way, they're calling things apartment complexes when they're actually townhomes and condos, individually owned, owner-occupied in many cases, and that's right in the middle of all of these green dots, a lot of single-family homes, which is why 20 years ago, when Mr. Dab did not own Van Wagenen's house, because Ruth Van Wagenen was still alive and lived there, did not own McGill's house, because Bruce McGill was still in the neighborhood, still lived there, when those houses were owned by property owners, we decided as a neighborhood to change that to single-family homes to protect the encroachment of these things. We wanted to keep the single-family neighborhood because we could see what was coming. We could see what's there. We could see that this is starting to grow like a little acorn growing into an oak tree, and these buildings are not great, but they're not bad. They're at most two and a half, two and a half stories tall. I don't know where this four-story complex that he's claiming exists, there is no four-story complex. The tallest one is two and a half stories, it's the one behind the church, that's the tallest one, and that's not even on Ninth East, it's a block away from 1,000 East. So there is some mass there, but that was the whole point. The whole point was, let's change this now to prevent the spread and preserve the single-family homes. He's coming and talking about knocking down single-family homes. Want to make one other quick point. On that block, which nobody has mentioned yet, there are seven historic homes. One of them is a landmark home, six more identified by the State Historic Commission as historic contributing homes, and this is going in right next or right in the middle of those. I want to make sure that we get that point out. So ultimately, the biggest problem that I see is the rezoning, because once you rezone to MDR, it spreads, and it allows developers to come back and say, "Well, this was MDR in 2017, and now I want to do something else. I want to do something that's still consistent with the zone." And how are you going to say no to somebody who's got a project proposal that's consistent with the zone that was put into place five years ago or 10 years ago? So I'm out of time, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thurston. Nice work.
Thank you.
Getting that in under three minutes. Okay, others who wish to come forward?
Hi, I'm Shawna Springer. I live on Center Street in Provo, just down the street from there, moved in just a few years ago. Thrilled to move into one of the historic homes, always wanted to live on Center Street in one of the historic homes, and I do. Have a real problem with the parking right there on Center Street, constantly have people blocking in front of my house from the apartments across the street. There is a real parking issue already on that street, and I'm really concerned that if you change the density and you add more homes in that area, that will really increase that issue of parking. Plus, the adding, putting that apartment building closer to the street will just change the look of that, and right now, it's a pretty neighborhood. There are apartments there, but you've got these beautiful historical homes on Center Street, and changing that looking, adding those apartments will really take away from that beautiful look, and I'm working so hard to restore this historic home, and it would just be a tragedy to me to add those apartments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Virginia Cannon-Fagon. My family owns the property that's directly adjacent to 911 East, where Mr. Dobbs is proposing to build nine apartments alongside the Van Wagenen House. My family has owned property at 9390 Center Street since the 1950s. The house was purchased by my grandparents, and after they died, I became the new occupant of the house with my husband. We view this neighborhood as a great neighborhood to raise a family. We've been investing a lot of money in restoring our house, and we've been very careful to keep a new garage that we're building consistent with the look of the Justice Johnson House, you know, using red bricks that match the actual house. This neighborhood is attractive to us as a place to raise a family because two blocks away, we've got the newly restored Provo Peaks Elementary School. It's beautiful restoration. One block, the next block over at 800 East, we've got this great park with a playground. Going down 900 East towards the south, there's some baseball diamonds. Going further east on Center Street, you've got the Provo Peaks Ice Skating Arena, continuing down Seven Peaks Boulevard, you've got, you know, water park, and you've also got the Boys and Girls Club at the end of 50th North. So you look at this place and you think, "Gosh, this would be a dreamland to be a little kid." Some of the problems that we have currently with this property, with this neighborhood, is that there's a significant amount of traffic coming down Center Street and coming down 900 East. We have frequent traffic accidents with people trying to turn left from Center Street onto 900 East to go towards Brigham Young University, and I wonder how adding all of these apartment complexes is going to affect the traffic and the number of traffic accidents. That's been one of the concerns for Center Street. At 700 East and Center Street, they installed a roundabout to try to slow cars down as they're coming down Center Street, and I wonder what the city would do to decrease traffic accidents since there's a high number of traffic accidents. You know, my husband and I can just sit in our house and hear traffic accidents, especially in August and September when students start coming back and they're not used to the way left turns work in Utah. Another concern I have is about the inconsistency between the designation, the legal descriptions of parcels according to the Utah County Recorder's Office and the actual, you know, way things are on the street. When you look at the parcel maps at the Utah County Recorder's Office's website and you superimpose them over satellite images of the property, you can see that where the Utah County Recorder's Office is defining pieces of property, it doesn't really match up with what's on the ground. For instance, the Thurstons' property shows up as going through apartment complexes alongside their house. My property shows up as going through Mr. Valerio's living room. My actual yard is a nice rectangular yard, but currently, according to the parcel description on the Utah County Recorder's website, my lot should be shaped like the state of Utah. My father and I had a big dispute against Mr. Dobbs when he purchased the property at 911 East Center Street because Mr. Dobbs exploited the discrepancies in various descriptions of what the parcel maps, what the parcels should be, and tried to assert a meter's width of my property running back the length of my yard. We had a big lawsuit to try to get the fence line to be what it had been historically, and in the course of trying to take the property, Mr. Dobbs tore out our fence, he tore out trees, he tore out, we found a cement patio where we'd had a picnic table and a barbecue pit that had the cement corner extending over where Mr. Dobbs said was now his property, and you could clearly see that this was on our property as part of our patio, and he came and took off the cement corner. He did everything he could do to try to widen his property as much as he could, with the end result being that we won a settlement to keep the fence line where it was. And so I'm concerned about how the issues with the parcel maps not lining up with the actual stuff on the ground could affect other neighbors. So is he going to do the same thing to somebody, the people living in the yellow brick house, and try to assert part of their property? I feel concerned about that. So those are all points that haven't been brought up yet, and there's things that are very concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Sandy Otting, and I'm a little bit different area. I live at 15 North 500 East, and you might say, "Well, how does that affect me?" But I have a huge living window that faces center, so Center Street is a big part of my life. All my neighbors within my blocks have trouble backing out onto the street, getting out on the Center Street because of the traffic. So traffic is one of my biggest concerns, but I also, can I request a look at a different slide or not? Is that like not okay? Can we do the aerial one? Because one of the things he pointed out is all the apartment buildings. True, there are a lot, but every one of them is U-shaped, has a small front, so it goes with the houses along, so it's congruous with the neighborhood. So that's my other concern. So traffic with the increased density, big deal on Center Street. I walk a lot downtown into Mazer Neighborhood, I have many friends in Mazer Neighborhood. Crossing Center Street is very difficult unless you walk to second where there's a light. So that's, and children cross there to get to Provo Peaks Elementary. They have a crossing guard at some points, but not all along the way. So those are my two major concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Thurston. I live in 965 East Center, and one of the things is about 20 years ago, like this gentleman exactly say, this area where we're zoning to R1.6 with a specific neighborhood goal of A, increase owner occupancy, B, decreasing absentee rentals, C, decreasing, the creation of illegal duplexes, D, encourage family-oriented occupation. This zoning was successful. We have seen increase in owner occupancy, locally present rentals, and families in the neighborhood. Res zoning the north side of Center Street to multifamily will be disrupting to the area and cause the cascade effect. Developer will be motivated to start to buying up the small home, small home with the idea of replacing then with bigger density apartment. They're going to break my neighborhood. I love to live right there. It's a wonderful neighborhood. We have the opportunity to know all the neighbors in the area, and I think so that they're going to be really difficult for us to continue to live right there as they change. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sles Knard, I'm one of the Joaquin Neighborhood Vice Chairs. I've been working with Norm Thurston on this. Also, I, I've been concerned about a couple of things mainly. One that kind of goes against the direction that at least Joaquin, as far as Center Street, we've been kind of talking about some design things, especially with the historic nature of a lot of the homes right there. And, and part of this is right next to a couple of the homes on the, on the north side of the street. And the, the massing, the way it looks with the rest of the homes is just completely off. It's, 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 you see much more of the building, like all the other ones, even though they're big apartments, it really looks like it's house-like because they're, you just see the narrow part, and this, this is going to be like a big front. The other thing is just the, you know, this, the houses there are all set back a lot further, even further than the new ordinance that just changed to 20 feet set back. They're further than that, they're like 30, which, which will only, you know, aggravate that, that high, huge mass that'll appear there. I, I think the neighbors have come up with a couple of things that would make the project more, you know, possible as far as something that would fit better. And that's, that's my main questions. I don't know if you have any questions for me, but that's, that's my main concern.
Thank you very much.
And the school, what she's saying about the kids crossing there, it's pretty, it's pretty scary as is, especially, I mean, it's great to have a roundabout for some reasons, but it really actually makes it really hard to see who's coming and how fast they're coming, and it, you know, it slows them down, but it's a problem. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, looks like that's all the public comment we have. We'll allow Mr. Dab a few minutes to respond to some of the comments if he so chooses, and then we'll return the conversation to the planning commission.
I would appreciate input. As indicated, we've held several neighborhood meetings. They've always been advertised. I personally walked flyers to a 300-yard radius, including the other two neighborhoods, Mazer and Joaquin. It only appears that, you know, when there's a hearing like this, that we actually get the feedback, but I appreciate the feedback. I'd love to be able to move forward. One comment was that, you know, the MDR was too much. You know, we're not asking for everything that MDR would provide, you know, density-wise or otherwise, but, you know, I know there's that big scary, you know, possibility that somebody might in the future. But Provo City has chosen- But Provo City has chosen to go from LDR to MDR. There's nothing in between. And so we're asking for something that, you know, would allow us to, you know, make it feasible to do. If there's, you know, some adjustments that can be made, I'd be happy to try to do those. If, you know, setbacks are an issue, you know, maybe we could look at that. But we've addressed a lot of the major concerns. We're eliminating driveways that currently back out onto 900 East. We're eliminating driveways that back out onto Center Street. We're bringing all the traffic in and putting parking interior to the block. We're meeting all the parking requirements. If, you know, staff has a little bit different interpretation, you know, we never considered that a zone change would change the use of the van wagon and home. I guess there's that possibility. If we need to provide additional parking spaces because it's considered something in a different zone, you know, would be happy to try to make those changes if it means a unit less here. But, you know, we saw pictures that are showing a building that is 36 feet high, the van wagon and home, against a proposed building that's 39 feet, but it looked like it was twice as big in staff's version. I don't know how those happen, you know, those perspectives. But I think we've tried to make a true representation of what would be here. The architects haven't tried to deceive us by, you know, reducing the size of a building in its picture, as was stated. If you guys want to take a walk, that's a four-story building. That's a four-story building. If you want to take a walk, you know, that is maybe two and a half based upon how it's set in the ground, but it's, you know, basically three-story high. If the issue is, you know, that fourth story, we'll find a workaround. But that's never been the issue, you know. We're simply coming at this saying, we've got some aging structures that need help. When it's an elementary school, everybody cheers because it gets rebuilt. If, if it's an old home, it apparently is a prized possession that can't be touched. Me, as the landowner, I try to balance that as well. I don't want to take down something that is useful and has a life to still provide something for someone. But when it becomes a liability, we want to try to move toward something better. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll return the conversation now to the planning commission after conversation. If there are any further questions for staff or others, then I'll look for a motion. Okay. Any comments or questions? Mr. Smith.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is reminiscent of a project that was done on 5th North and maybe the 200 or 300 block where there was a couple of older homes. And one was just so old that it was cost prohibitive to renovate. And so there was a plan to kind of tear it down and build an apartment complex in its stead. And it was worked out where the, the street-facing side of it was made to look very similar to the home next to it. And it was a little taller, not a lot taller, but it looked very similar. The setback was the same. It felt, looked and felt the same as everything else. The parking was done in the back, not along the side of it. And, and that was approved and went through. I think that it's important that look and feel kind of be the same, be similar. These U-shaped with the nice courtyards, they're, they're not extremely noticeable. I think that the, the area could use a facelift. Those buildings probably, if they were sold individually, would be cost prohibitive to renovate and have somebody live in it for the next, you know, 50 years. And putting some there, something there in its stead is probably a great idea, but it's got to look and feel like the rest of what's there. Putting the massing that was there up against the sidewalk works in some places, and some places it doesn't. And I believe in this spot, it doesn't work there. I would be in favor of something that was different. And I do have one question for staff, maybe that what's allowable in the maximum in light or the low-density residential? What's the max occupant or?
Low-density residential, as far as density, allows up to 15 units to the acre, but the key characteristic, which this proposed project is obviously much above that, but the key between the LDR and the MDR, though, is the ability of stacking units. The LDR does not permit that. So your, your highest form would be a, like, say, a townhome-style project, so.
Thirty feet. Okay. All right, those are my comments and question. Thank you.
Ms. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to focus a little bit more on my perception of Center Street. For me in Provo, Provo is quite different from places like Orem or Pleasant Grove because we have an intact historic corridor. It's commercial, it's residential, and I would label it kind of the jewel of our city. It's, it's what gives it a special identity. And when you start looking at issues of architecture, the height of buildings, the materials, those all play into that theme, but the urban design of that corridor also plays into it. Things like setbacks, planning strips along the street, sidewalk widths, walls, landscaping, those all, even the trees that march down Center Street are all part of that urban design identity. And when you start allowing a higher intensity use that does not follow those urban design parameters, you're really fragmenting then this jewel that you have. So for those reasons, and the, the level of density, I think, is not appropriate for this location, in my opinion. I find it incongruent with the existing neighborhood context, not just setbacks and massing, but also the density.
I'm somewhat acquainted with, with the neighborhoods that surround this area and their effort over the many years to, to try to regain their, their neighborhood. Years ago, in the 60s and 70s, many single-family homes were bought and leveled in order for higher density to be built. And you saw a great exodus of owners, homeowners. And I know that the, that people in the area worked hard to try to keep that from continuing to happen. I think that if the zone were changed, we'd be, it'd be taking some steps backwards and kind of undoing all that work that had been done. There are areas in the city where high density, higher density is appropriate. I'm not ignorant of the fact that our population is growing and will continue to grow. But I don't believe that it would be beneficial for the city or the neighborhood to change the zone in this area.
Thank you. Ms. Wynden.
I'm gonna try to be succinct, but I concur with the other comments that have been raised I don't have big concerns with higher density at an intersection like this, per se, and higher being relative, you know, compared to something else, but, again, that being said, I agree with the other comments about context, for example, mattering what, what's kind of woven in and around what's being proposed here. One of the bigger concerns that I have with the proposal, and Mr. Corey, maybe you can help me understand if there's anything that the city could do to, to make it so that a project plan, for example, were limited to one side of a street versus, you know, straddling Center Street in this case, to go up and pick up those two, I think they are properties on the north side, and to have them woven in relative to maybe considering a future application. I, in my mind, those two things certainly would have to stand on their own and on their own merit if there was a proposal made to redevelop north and south of Center Street. But in terms of just bulk mass, different things like that, and again, other things that have been discussed, I think the project's a long ways off. I do appreciate as well the recommendation that came from the Landmarks Commission and the reasons that they gave for recommending that the proposal be denied. And relative to just the design, for me to, to be comfortable with the design, first of all, I think it'd really have to be excellent, you know, in every way, probably with less density, and appreciate the applicant, you know, saying he's maybe amenable to exploring that. But 9th East and Center Street, in my view, that's a very, very prominent corner, and having that treated appropriately from a design perspective, just relative to how a building would orient to that particular corner, would be really important. But I guess just for clarity as well, had I mentioned having projects stand on their own merit north and south of Center Street? We have a lot of jewels along the Center Street corridor, and, you know, at least as proposed, the structure that we're looking at next to the van wagon and home, I think it absolutely would have a very significant adverse impact on the adjacent properties. Again, that's kind of reiterating something that's already been shared, but today, we've got a vacant lot there essentially, so I would guess that at some point in time, somebody's gonna propose something to be built there. Regardless of the number of units, maybe that are in a structure, I think it just needs to, to fit in terms of scale and design.
I don't really have much to, more to add to what's been said, to echo a lot of what's been said. I certainly understand the frustrations Mr. Dab has articulated, what he feels and has described as moving target. I'm not sure about the history of that. I feel like what I heard from Mr. Corey tonight was, was pretty clear, and if it's taken some time for that to get to communicated, I'm not, again, I'm not sure of the factors that are involved there, but I, I felt like the staff's presentation here was, was really clear to me, and maybe we just go forward from that, that point. I think that, you know, we've talked a little bit as a planning commission and a little bit as a city about some of the, the kind of Euclidean zoning based primarily upon land use and, and density stuff versus form-based zoning. What I'm hearing tonight is that this, this particular stretch is perhaps a place where the, the form-based zoning approach is most, most appropriate, even though we don't have form-based zones, the kind of attitude embraced by form-based zoning where, you know, Mr. Chris said already, you know, it's gotta have, it's gonna have to be really good. I think that part of the, part of the trick for me is that, you know, I'm actually not, I agree with your, your comment about feeling like there's inconsistencies in terms of setbacks along Center Street and perhaps even aesthetic inconsistencies. And that's part of my, my quibble with, with sections of Center Street as well. I feel like what's been done in the past wasn't, as we've just heard, excellent. But I don't think that's an excuse to, to approve a project that I would agree isn't, isn't excellent in terms of its design, in terms of its, as Mrs. Jensen's talked about, in terms of its, kind of the, not just the architectural design, but the, the kind of urban design, the setbacks. And so I, again, just, just agree with what, what people have said here and just add those slightly different terms, which I think about it. But, but I feel like staff is really clear here, and hopefully, we're, going forward, you can work with them with that clear vision that's been articulated in a number of different ways by a number of different people here. Okay, unless there's other, other comments, we'll look for, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend denial of item four to the municipal council. Brian Dab requests a zone map amendment from R1.6, one-family residential and RC residential conservation zones to the MDR zone in order to construct a multifamily residential complex comprised of four existing buildings and four proposed new buildings on approximately 2.5 acres, generally located on the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection of 900 East and Center Street foothills and Previs neighborhoods.
I'll second.
Mrs. Wynden with a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Jensen's motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. We're looking for a motion on item number five now.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Smith?
I would move that we deny the requested preliminary project plan for item number
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Smith's motion, please indicate. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. We're almost three hours into the meeting. Does any, do any of the commissioners need a break, or are we just power on?
Oh, through.
Okay. Item number six, Tyson Barker requests project plan approval for a charter school located at approximately 1792 South State Street in the A1.5 and R1.6 zones in the Spring Creek neighborhood. Dustin Wright will be presenting this item to us.
So to orient you guys on this project, this is on the South State Street between 1640 South and 1860 South. This is the site where a proposed charter school for a elementary K through sixth grade is being located. The school is projected to have 530 students, and the site has two zones currently on the parcel, an agricultural A1.5 zone and a residential R1.6 zone. The area where the school is proposed to be located is on the A1.5 portion of this The state code, our state law allows for charter schools to go in any zone, so it'd be permitted, but they are subject to zoning requirements that the city does have, excluding aesthetics, landscaping, and building inspections. So city staff has reviewed it. It meets the setbacks of that current zone that it's located in. In the future, if the site is developed as, as you can see here, there's some areas that aren't being developed on this, the parcel. So in the future, when those go to be developed, it'd be the recommendation then that those would be, that there'd be a new plat done that would cut those off from the existing property here, and that there would also need to be some rezoning done at that time. to meet whatever future development is proposed there. The street frontage that would be accessing the school currently would go off of State Street and enter in right here, and the school's setback here in the back of the property. In the future, the city's requesting that there's a dedicated space along the west side of the property here to accommodate a future road as that area starts to develop north and south of the property to help alleviate traffic and meet the needs of those parcels there. And so that dedication's being worked on with the city right now, to have that dedicated over to the city as part of this project. The, one of the items that doesn't meet our current code that's being proposed is parking. The current parking requirement for a school of the size that they're proposing would be to have 96 stalls, that's at three parking stalls per room, that would be for administration or classroom. The code does also allow for a parking justification study to take place where they analyze the site and the proposed use, and have the planning commission review that, and have the ability to have a reduction of the parking that's required by the current code. So, they had Hales Engineering perform a traffic, or, excuse me, a parking justification study, and that study's included in the staff report. The recommendation from that study was that, instead of the three stalls per classroom, that it'd be .13 stalls per student required for, to meet the parking need. So, based on the 530 projected enrollment, that would be 69 required stalls. And their current plan shows 70 parking stalls. So, with the planning commission approving that justification, they would be able to meet all the requirements for that zone. So, if that's approved, that would be an important thing. The other recommendations from staff are that the CRC approvals received, that the road dedication is accepted by the city, and like I mentioned, that's being taken care of at this time. That parking reduction to .13 required stalls per enrolled student, and that the, any future development of the site, the remainder of the site that's listed as future development, that that'd be subject to a new plat for those areas, and that they would need to have a applicable rezoning for the proposed use at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions? Mrs. Wynden.
Just one, in regards to the parking, I realize that most of this is just daily parking, but occasionally, there're gonna be school activities. So, where would the parking take place then? You know, when you have something that involves the majority of the parents or kids?
Correct. In the parking justification study, Hales Engineering looked at a similar charter school that's up on 820 North, it's called Freedom Preparatory Academy. And as part of that study, they went, then did their parking counts during school hours, and they also did some parking counts during, I believe it was a basketball game or an event where they see, or where the applicant of that property said that that's where they see the most event participation or traffic. And so, they also did one at that time and found out that the parking that they were providing for the school also met the requirement for that, so.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, invite applicant Tyson Barker, or anyone that's representing him to come forward and address the item. Okay. It's unusual. Okay, we will just skip right to the neighborhood chair. The neighborhood chair for the Spring Creek neighborhood is here, invite her to come forward.
I'm a bit, Mary Miller, Spring Creek Neighborhood Chair. I'm a bit surprised as well that the applicant is not here. It's kind of been like that from the beginning when they started this. I understand they don't have to have our people inspect. I understand there are different things for charter schools, but I've been a little concerned about his lack of willingness to tell us as a neighborhood exactly what is going on. First time we asked for, you know, something that showed us what was going on, nothing. Nothing was forthcoming. And in fact, in my conversation with him, he didn't feel like that was necessary. So, there's some concerns there. One of the biggest ones I have, though, is, as you drive on State Street and you look at that development, I'm wondering how much land is going to be, what's the word I'm looking for? Received by the city for the road? And does that include that green parkway that we spoke of in the southeast area neighborhood plan? It doesn't look, based on where it is here, but then I'm not, you know, I would need to take a tape measure to see. So, I would like that question answered, if there is an answer to it, just to kind of, you know, the whole hope, as that new street goes in back there, is that there will be a place to do that greenway, to put a sidewalk and trees, and make it a pleasant experience to be able to walk all the way up to the park when the park is completed. And these are not just my thoughts, I've talked to some people from the neighborhood as well. We were all very excited when they did post on the site, kind of what was going to be there, but did not understand why it wasn't granted when, you know, it's a simple, it's a simple question. You know, and for the neighborhood to function well together, we need to be, you know, willing to share what's going on. So, those are the only concerns that are really there, and if those could be addressed tonight, that would be great, because then that would give me the opportunity to take it back to a neighborhood meeting. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Unless there's any other neighborhood chairs which speak, we'll open it up to public comment.
Well, I'm not a neighborhood chair, but I am the closest neighbor to that piece of property right there.
You count as a public, go ahead.
Yeah, and about 10 years ago, this piece of property was brought before this council here before, and I thought they zoned it commercial, and it was said, "Do not bring this ever again to change this zoning ever." That was 10 years ago, but that's not here nor there. But this is the first hearing that we've had on this property. So, you're building a building that's now three-quarters of the way done, this is the first hearing that I've had about this project, okay? Then, you've got, originally, over there in the top corner to the property would be the northeast side, there's a spring over there, it's been there for years. And 15 years ago, after they lost a few caterpillars and heavy equipment in it, they dug a pipe and ran all the way across that to drain that, because originally, that property was 25 feet lower than it is today. And it was basically wetlands. If you look at the property to the due south of that, that belongs to Pacific States, it has cattails and stuff like that on it. The property was wetlands, at least the back part of that. Well, they filled it in with 25, 20 to 25 feet of fill on top of that, and it's garbage fill. Right now, there's a four-foot berm around my house that they put up around there. I can show you pictures of it. There's pieces of steel, pieces of rebar, pieces of wood, and big, huge chunks of concrete that they dug out from that basement where they built that first, where they built the school itself. So, I'm kind of surprised that they can build anything on that property unless it's completely stripped and cleaned out. So, that's, you know, and now, the way they've done it, that little rectangle, or that square over here on the northwest side of the property is now retention pond. And now, I've got a four-foot wall in front of my property with a pond that's gonna take all the water that used to come off of 1640s to crawl across their property. Now, it's gonna funnel it right to my front door. Is there a pointer? Yeah, okay. So, this thing right here is a retention pond. My house is right here, I was the high spot. The property came off and it tailed off into here. And so now, they've come out and put this retention pond here. I have a four-foot wall here, and I have a four-foot wall of dirt right there. And so now, the water used to come off of State, come down here, right across there, and come back to the railroad property where there's a ditch back there. And so now, I've got this giant pond out there and a big wall that's gonna turn me into a pond. So, I don't know what kind of legal rights I have, or whatever, if they fled me out of there. So, I have multiple problems with this development, really. And then they're saying, I talked to the project manager, this thing that's on site, and he was laughing, saying, "We don't have to do anything with Prolo City, because we're, this is a school and that belongs to the state inspector, so we don't have to do anything with him." So, he was laughing about it.
Can I ask you really quickly a question about a comment you made early on in your comments? What's 25% or 50% completed?
The building. This building is up. It's got a roof on it, they're in there sheet rocking it, it's got plumbing on it, it's got the heating and air conditioning going in right now. They're starting to brick the outside of it.
I thought I had driven by and seen that.
So, I mean, you're asking me for, you're asking for a plan there, and the building's there. This building here is not there, and I asked the guy about this one, he told me, he goes, "Oh, that's gonna be a slab-on-grade." I go, "Well, that definitely can't go there, because the dirt underneath it, it's complete garbage." I mean, you go, "Look, there's a 25-foot wall of dirt here, and there's a 30-foot wall of dirt right there going on to Pacific States property."
By garbage dirt?
It's complete, it's got huge chunks of concrete, metal, it's got wood, it's got bricks in it, rebar, it's got all kinds of garbage I've seen. I mean, I'll show you pictures, if you want to see the pictures of it, but I'm telling you, this shouldn't be built on until that's completely stripped down. I mean, they dug down 15 feet here, but you still got 10 feet of garbage underneath of it. And it's flooding, if they don't have a pump going, it will flood, because it's a high-water table there. So, I'm not, I was really surprised that this got approved without a hearing. I've never talked to the neighborhood chairman about it, it used to be Tim Bruff. Tim used to come over and talk to me all the time, and Gary about it, but, so I'm a little concerned about it. Maybe that's why the guy didn't show up, so, thanks for your time.
Thanks for that information.
My name is Gary Norr, and I'm Bill's neighbor, and I've been out there 26 years. This used to be two and a half acres of high ground. This was 30 feet lower, this was always low land or wetlands. So, we always had the high ground. When the water would flood from the head gate up here, it'd come down the road, it just went right like this, and it missed our property, because we were the high ground. In 1998, I sold this quarter acre right here to Ray Morley, and in that contract, I said, "Any future development would not put us in a flood basin." Okay, and that's exactly what has happened. If you look at one picture, you know, the water right now is gonna come down, hit their berm, and right at this point, it'll start going down our driveways into our homes. Our homes were built in 1928. They sit 18 inches lower than 1640 State Street. They are old homes, and we're gonna get flooded. The water runs off those storage units, doesn't have any place to go, it hits the road, it crosses right here, and then it floods, it goes like that. You know, it always just, because we were the high ground, it just never got up to us. Well, I talked to Chris, the project manager, and I said, "Well, you're gonna have to put some sort of drain pipe in here, here, and here, to keep all this water that comes on State Street, because there's no way it's gonna fall into that flood basin, and this is all sloped north now." Okay, so all this water is gonna run north, and this flood basin is gonna be an asset. I mean, the little culvert they put in there, I saw the one at Mother Plate yesterday, and it was like a big 20-inch, they were littered out, and they just got this little 10-inch toilet, concrete pipe in there.
I know this is gonna cramp your style, but can you speak in the microphone?
I'm sorry.
I asked primarily because it's being recorded.
I'm sorry, yeah. But, being, you know, being in a flood basin is my main concern. And I wrote a letter in March to Rebecca Andrus stating that. And she said, "Well, they're taking care of that, they're taking care of that." And then I finally, I says, you know, "I'm not worried about the development where the water's going, I'm worried about where the water used to go before the development." I mean, they pushed all this fill towards our property, and now, the water doesn't have any place to go when it comes down to State, or 1640. You know, it's gonna go right in here, and our homes are sit, sit lower than this little drive here. You know, this is all my property back here. I rezoned it in 1994 to RA, because my dream was to have animals and a trout pond. And so, there's a trout pond on the property. And, you know, Bill, he's more commercial, and he's got a piece of paper that says that he can be commercial there. But Ray Morley wanted to put 14 twelve-plexes in here 20 years ago. And that didn't happen, because the ground was insufficient to support that, and you guys knew that. But he thought it was my, you know, because I had a little list of the neighbors that says, "We don't want these twelve-plexes, that's gonna be another boulders if they do that." And so, the city told me, "Well, we weren't gonna approve it anyway, because the ground, it won't support that." So, yeah, this is, you know, I got this last week, and this, usually, we get one of these before things happen. But, you know, they went in and built this, the project manager says they're putting in a daycare right here, and parking for the daycare. Well, this future development, it's gonna go residential. That's what they want to do, is put high-density residential in there. And, you know, being RA, and everything around it being commercial, I just don't see there's any room for apartment buildings in here. You know, this is commercial out here, this is gonna be, you know, a little shopping mall or something, but I would like to see a masonry wall and drainage on their side of that wall that would take this water from here and put it back where it naturally flows, which is over here. This map is incredibly old, I mean, this is like 10 years' old aerial map, because, you know, I've got construction out there that doesn't, it's not showing. So, this is really a bad map. And I don't know what this is, but I know that we were, they talked about putting trails and parkways, and a little park over here, and when they developed this road back there, there was gonna be a little meandering sidewalk with benches, so joggers could jog along it. Well, I have no idea what that white thing is, but this is, this is all railroad property here, and they pushed their fill right up to the line. And like Bill said, it's, you know, you should drive out there, just drive around like this. This road comes back onto the overpass at 1860, and, you know, there's no problem driving on that road. But yeah, where, where are the railroad tracks? They're right there, they're just kind of blurred out, aren't they? Because, yeah. Anyway, my concern was, first of all, the flooding. And if, and if this is commercial, then it's mandated that they put up a six-foot masonry wall. Well, that would, that would satisfy us, and we're kind of glad to see that it's not high-density residential going in there, because there's been very many proposals over the last 25 years for this property. You know, they were gonna relocate the Silver Fox Trailer Park, they were gonna put storage units in at once, a junkyard, salvage yard, you know, so it's gone through all the gambit. And, you know, we just sit there, and Bill used to have a driveway that kind of went around so he could circle around, but that's gone now. But that's where the water ran, was from this point right there, you can see that driveway, the water would run just like that. And so, that's gone away, and Rebecca said, right here, she says, "I drove out there today. I can definitely see what your concerns." I'm coordinating with our stormwater division to access this. I'm coordinating with our stormwater division to access this issue. I will get back to you shortly." And that was, uh, back in March. So, that retainment pond's fine for the development, but it, it doesn't address the water that's always come down this road. I mean, there's storm gates up here and they, they flood over. And the water, you know, comes down here, and I have a berm on my driveway back here just to keep the water from going in, into my house. So water's number one, the wall's number two, the garbage and the fill. I've seen it and have pictures of it. I've got a plat map that used to be called Bayview Subdivision. And, uh, it was laid out in 1923. And the elevation out there was 35 feet lower than the railroad tracks. Uh, I kinda measured it with a transit thing. And so that, you know, there was, there was a spring right here, and this was all marshland. And so, my head's up. The traffic, you know, this is, right now, this is not a through street.
Sir, I, I think we get the picture.
Okay. Trying to make this turn right here, it's like trying to make that 120-degree turn off State Street, it's dangerous. And then when you sit in the left-turn lane trying to go this way. So, I, I know that right now they're just worried about this, but this is what he really wants to do, is put a road in there. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before we continue with any public input, can I just ask one question of staff?
Yeah.
Why are we even listening to this?
Yeah, what's our, what can we?
What can we do? And, and are we just wasting our time? If we are, let's move on with something else.
So, you're referring to that they're already building?
Yeah. This is, this is the propane tank in front of Macy's again. You know, they put it in, and then they come to us and say, "Oh, by the way, is it all right?" Well, not really, but...
Not only that, but just what's the city's purview for the, you know, charter school use, that whole thing?
Yeah, so like I mentioned, uh, the state law allows for charter schools to go in any zone. So, they're allowed to go in the zone, but they do have to meet the zoning requirements that the city has. And so that, for that reason, it's gone through CRC and, and has come to planning commission to, same as any other project. The only exclusion there is, like I mentioned, the aesthetics of the building, the materials, the architecture isn't something that the city can regulate, um, as well as landscaping. So those items are excluded. But setbacks and all the, all those other things are...
Parking, that's...
Parking, exactly.
So CRC, in this case, CRC approval hasn't been given?
CRC hasn't been given.
Yet they're building already.
They started building without that approval, so that's at their own risk if, um, you know, for whatever reason.
So do we just table this and move it back to CRC and...
One, one of the reasons it's come to planning commission is, like I mentioned, for that parking justification. That's something the planning commission can grant that reduction. Um, so if that's something that, that is granted, then they would meet, um, all the zoning requirements for that zone. Um, that's why it's here at planning commission to get that approval as well. Because without that, they'd be required to have more parking, so they'd have to, um, still amend their site plan to accommodate those additional stalls that they aren't currently showing in their plan. But they have started, um, since they don't have city building inspectors going, we, you know, didn't, weren't able to go out and, and, uh, put a stop work on it because it's, uh, private inspectors that are...
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, are you, are you frustrated? I wasn't frustrated about this before, but I, I found myself increasingly frustrated. I mean, has, has this been really frustrating to you? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously not ideal, but again, it's, it's something that's at their own risk. If, for whatever reason, there was a concern that was brought forward at a public hearing that, um, was an actual zoning requirement that wasn't, uh, met and required an alteration of the building, then that's something that they would, you know, have to, to make those changes.
Mr. Chair, so issues like, um, water drainage, um, the very ground they're building on, are those things that are inspected and passed by their own independent inspectors? Or would that be something that the city should, uh, is that something that's in the city's purview?
Yeah, so the, um, Public Works Department has, uh, still has the purview over those things as well. And, and Rebecca's here and could probably answer a lot of those questions that, uh, that came up regarding, um, the grading and the storm drain and, and those types of issues. Um, so...
And I just have one quick question. I have not encountered a hearing where someone, the applicant, did not appear. What is, um, I mean, it does send a message.
Yeah, I mean, your options, I, you know, you could continue it to a future meeting if you felt like there was something you needed to, um, address with them or get more information.
So you could say you're not inclined to approve their parking reduction, which is something you're from there?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna continue it. They're not gonna show up when their hearing is scheduled.
But if we, I mean, regardless, if we deny it or continue it, are they gonna show up again if they don't really have to?
Yeah, you still, you still have all the same options to approve, deny, or continue. You know, so if you're gonna deny it, it'd be based on, uh, facts, you know, if it's that you're not gonna approve the parking or...
Parking.
Or whatever reasons there.
Okay. Um, unless there's any other public comment, I, I would love to hear from Rebecca about, um, some of the grading issues. I mean, this strikes me as really alarming.
So, um, we looked at the, uh, the geotechnical report, which is one of the, one of the first things that we flagged on the site. Because we know the history of it, there was a lot of, um, unconsolidated, undocumented trash fill that got brought onto the site. And, um, it was unacceptable, obviously, for any sort of building. So we required them, first of all, to do the geotechnical report. And then, um, the recommendations within the geotechnical report, there are several different options for how they can stabilize the ground. One is to completely remove all of the, um, deleterious material, which even could be, um, some of the native because it was, you know, you'd, you'd lose vehicles in there. So it was pretty crazy. So that's, that's one option. They had options for geo-piers, different kinds of footings and so forth. We actually had a meeting with the owners and everybody to sit down and, and talk about all of the requirements prior to issuing a grading permit, which we didn't... It's, it's kind of tricky on projects like this because we didn't want to actually, you know, move forward with any sort of permitting. But technically, it was kind of a forgiveness permit because they had already started grading and they'd already started doing everything. And there's a certain amount that we can do and a certain amount that we can't do.
So that's one way to get some oversight on it then, right? You issue the permit so that then you can inspect and keep track of stuff.
Right, so we have been, um, trying to keep track of some of the grading. We have had inspectors out on site. They have removed the material underneath where the building was, um, placed. In a normal city project, we would not have allowed a basement in this area without waterproofing and all sorts of things. However, since we don't issue the building permit, we had no say necessarily in what they did as far as a basement. So they are dealing with water issues flowing into the basement, and they have, um, sump pumps and land drains and so forth around the building to deal with that. We've had various conversations, um, about that issue. The storm drainage is definitely a concern, and I did, um, I have been working, trying to make sure that they are dealing with the storm drainage, not only on site, but what's coming down 1640. However, um, it's, it's been a process, and since they haven't gotten to the point of approved plans yet, we're still dealing with that, and that's why I haven't, um, completed that circle with, um, is Mr. Farley? Gary, okay, you're Mr. Farley. Anyway, with Gary. I haven't completed that cycle with Gary because we're still actually trying to work on this, this issue. One of the things is, um, there is a storm drain line in 1640.
That's actually straight.
There, there are two lines in 1640. One is an irrigation line and one is a storm drain line.
The irrigation line goes to my, or the trout pond?
There is a 48-inch irrigation line in 1640. Yes. Anyway, there's a 48-inch storm drain line in 1640 that we have required them to, um, this, this pond is required to drain to that line because, um, this is a high groundwater table area, um, which they have found out after they dug a basement. Anyway, so, um, and, so you can't retain water on the site because it would just basically come back and flood everybody out. So, um, they were required to have a detention pond, and then that pond then discharges to this line. The pond is, is sized such that it's actually twice, twice as much as the current requirement for drainage. And then it also has a two-foot freeboard on top of that. So we've tried to, um, deal with some of the issues because this line, this storm drain line up here does surcharge at times. And so it can possibly back up, so we wanted to make sure that they had extra storage and that they had it at the proper level. Again, we're still trying to deal with making sure that they're getting everything onto the site. They at one point in time had submitted some plans that showed all of the contours, you know, flowing the water towards the adjacent properties. But then they said, you know, "Grate it away," and we're like, "No, actually, get a berm there. Keep the water away from the properties." They tried to make sure that they're not, um, just flowing off just indiscriminately, that they're actually dealing with the drainage on their site. And, but again, it's still a process, and we're almost to the point of getting them where they're in the right place, but...
So, uh, both, um, both of the public comments express concern about the water coming down from State Street. Um, and are you suggesting that the, the line on, the irrigation line on 1640 South is adequate for that? Uh, the water that comes there or that...
Line that's going this way or which?
Yeah, I mean...
Yes.
So in other words, in other words, as I understand it, from, again, the, the two gentlemen who've lived there for, for a number of years, when water comes down from State Street along 1640 South, and it used to, you know, cross the property, missing, missing their homes, what's the infrastructure right now that addresses that particular drainage, uh, water? You know, where, where, where does it go?
So, the way that, the way that the eventual grading will be, it'll still come onto the site and it would go into the pond. I don't know...
And then from the pond?
It would go from the pond. There's a pipe from the pond into the 48-inch.
And, and you feel confident that that's adequate?
With the eventual plan, yes. The concern is what's going on right now is not necessarily what's supposed to be going on. And so we're, we're still kind of dealing with that interim process. And since we haven't actually approved the grading of the site yet, it's, it's still a work in progress. And what they're doing, you know, I've, I've tried to tell them, you know, "You need to deal with the interim project." And make sure, I'm like, "These guys are not getting flooded. Don't flood them." So, we've been trying to work with them, but it's, since we haven't approved anything yet, they're not totally doing everything. And since you can't stop what they're not doing, it's kind of a tricky process.
Mr. Chair, when you say "we haven't approved anything," who do you mean by "we"?
The city.
The city.
Has not approved.
So this that we're talking about right now?
Right.
Or something that you, your department has to...
So the site plans, drainage, you know, we do have some purview over, over drainage, over, um, of course, the utilities and so forth, and safety-related issues. So, in the traffic control plan, when it said that they needed more queuing distance, we, they actually increased this road to, to add the queuing distance. This, this is now three, three cars wide coming in, so you can stack cars from here all the way around, three cars wide to, um, for pickup and drop-off and so forth.
Learning from Freedom Academy?
Trying to, so, yes.
Are you implying that, you know, let, let's say that we didn't approve this plan tonight, let's say we recommended, um, a denial. Does that delay your oversight? I mean, does that, that put off your oversight powers? I, I guess I'm just not sure. This is such a bizarre, I mean, just trying to wrap my head around this whole thing. It's...
Schools are bizarre, yes.
What helps you do your job the best, if this gets approved?
Um, so, the parking reduction has nothing to do with anything that we're doing necessarily, but what it does do is it makes it so that they will have to come back and redo what they're doing for parking. We're, we're looking at, from, from our side, from Public Works and Utilities, trying to, um, get them a permit, because to my knowledge, what's happening is they're essentially putting in utilities without anybody watching at this point and leaving them just open, which isn't the greatest idea. But we haven't permitted them to do it, so it's kind of tricky.
This kind of sounds like a Get Gep Heart moment, something like...
Yes.
Bizarre.
Anyway, so as far as what helps me do my job, it's, you know, the, the parking issue has, is, is another complete animal than, than what we have.
Right.
But it's just, in general, with the way that the state allows certain things to happen with schools, it ties our hands a bit as to what we can do. And so it's not anything that you guys are doing to stop me from doing what I do.
There's no coordination. I mean, is there any, any interaction between you or the city and, and the state? I mean, is there, is there not really an ability for you to flag really alarming things to the state inspectors or...
If, if they were doing something with, like, the utilities, or if we went out there and saw that they were, um, just, uh, building stuff on the top of the, you know, crappy material or something like that, we could, we could probably stop that. But so far, we haven't witnessed any of that necessarily.
You can't, you can't say, "Hey, their basement is flooding," or "They don't have a, they don't have a, they don't have approval yet and they're..."
But we don't do the building permit.
I still don't understand why we're looking at this at all, really. That's interesting.
Yeah, in the future, they will be coming back for a subdivision plot and a zone change.
After it's all done, after it's all built, they'll, they'll be coming back for a zone change?
After that, we have the ability to affect those things, but this particular situation is, we are limited.
I'm inclined to move that we continue this or deny it until we have the applicant here to, to talk to us.
This is blowing my mind.
Whether we have teeth in this or not, I want to have somebody in front of us that can answer some questions. Not, not like we're all powerful or anything, but I think that there's some questions that bear, you know, asking and answering.
Oh, I mean, it's our citizens that are going to go to the school presumably.
Their public funds are being used to build this, and that's the part for me that...
Yep.
Yeah.
Charter schools, man.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
That we deny, uh, item six, the request for project plan approval for a charter school located at approximately 1792 South State Street in the A1.5 and R1.6 zone.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, are those in favor of the motion? Please indicate.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So if you're gonna deny it, um, we do need you to state findings, um, for why that's being denied.
The guy didn't show up.
No. I think we, I mean, we would need to deny it. We would deny their request for the parking, um, reduction. No, I think we, I mean, we would need to deny it. We would deny their request for the parking reduction.
So the Ray Morley was, Ray Morley with M 13?
Do we, do we adequately address, is that reason enough that we don't, we don't approve the parking reduction request?
Yeah, yeah, so if that's the, the reason that you stated in your motion, that you're denying it based on the, that you're not approving the parking justification reduction and that their site doesn't meet the parking requirement, that would be a finding that you could, could use.
Is that sufficient or can I, should I mention any of the other things that were brought up? Should that be part of the motion? Okay, then, then I move that we deny the request for project plan approval, sorry, plan approval for a charter school located at approximately 1792 South State Street in the A 1.5 and R 1.6 zones due to concerns about the stormwater drainage and and fill. And that there was no represent, the applicant was not here to answer the questions that the commission had.
And then in addition to that, that we, we deny the?
And we deny the, the parking.
Justification.
Yes.
Reduction.
Demand reduction.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess we scratched that first motion and the vote on that first motion and, and accept the revised motion and, and vote. Okay. Item number seven, Michael Wade, who's had to wade through the previous six items to get to this point, requests amendments to section 14.32.020 to allow, this is my favorite, eating places and personal services within the residential conservation zone in existing commercial structures. This has a citywide impact. Aaron Ardmore is gonna talk to us about eating places.
Thank you. So the applicant here is interested in property at 45 E 6er North, the famous Wash Hut in Joaquin neighborhood. He's interested in this property and allowing new uses to go in there. We've worked with the applicant for some time on, on what would be the best way forward for this property. And we've, we've kind of come to this point with this ordinance amendment. So going back to the, what that would look like, currently it's in the RC zone. As was stated a little earlier, the RC zone restricts not only density, but the permitted use to what was permitted in 2002. So that really puts a tie on that building. If laundromat is no longer a viable use, you're kind of stuck. So what we've done here is in the permitted uses in the RC zone, we've, we've added eating places and personal services, but put caveats on those that they could only exist in existing commercial structures. As well as professional services, which was already permitted, but only in historic buildings. We were changing that to be allowed in existing commercial structures as well. The applicant feels like these added uses for the RC zone in a whole would help this building be able to be a viable commercial spot for the Joaquin neighborhood. Once again, and, and any other commercial structures in any other RC zones would be able to open up a little bit more.
So Planning Commission may recall that we added this land use 5410 and this one, 5862, for another historic building or, or existing commercial building in Joaquin that now has been used as the Bicycle Co-op.
Yeah, Bicycle Collective, which is an amazing use of that space. Okay, oh, sorry, are you?
No, go ahead.
Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Okay, well, by the applicant, the lone man left in the room, come forward. But what a show it was, Mr. Wade.
How you guys do this every week, man? It's a long meeting.
They get paid so much.
That's what I'm saying.
The big bucks.
Trying to take your job, so. That's my next campaign after, after this. Thank you guys for your time. I'll try to make this really quick, have a little prepared statement. So my goal, my team's goal is very simple. Essentially, it is to significantly add value to the community by reviving a building that is at the center of the student experience and providing those same students with services that they are in desperate need of. Specifically and especially a place to get food and connect with their peers. Previously, being a student myself and knowing the student culture well, I have a good understanding, I believe, of some of the positives and negatives affecting the students within our community. While there are many positives, the dilapidated, underused building on 600 North 495 East, also known as the Wash Hut, is not only an eyesore, but an eye sore, but an eyesore in the most heavily foot trafficked area in Provo. We are prepared to inject a significant amount of capital that will not only benefit the building, but offer services that will improve the lives of the students, a demographic that we have in ample supply here in Provo. So I have the support of the students, I have the support of Neighborhood Chair Bill Graff, and tonight I'm asking for your support to, to get this thing approved, to add services that will not only benefit the community, but the students at large. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. There are no neighborhood chairs nor public here to comment, but do, are there any questions?
Any ideas this far or you're just waiting to see what happens before you kind of divulge?
For what can go in there?
Go in there.
Yeah, really a lot of different potentialities. I mean, essentially, like, it does fall under the umbrella of these specific uses. Specifically, there has been a large interest from kind of a hamburger chain based out of Hawaii called Seven Brothers. I don't know if you guys have heard of that, but it's our N H W I Hawaii campus. They've actually toured the site and we've entered into like some negotiations. But this process has been like extremely long. And because of that, it's kind of like rubbed some, some rancor with kind of the, the public sector, how you guys do things in the private sector and hey, looking for different entities that want to use this space. So it's like, so if they drive by it and they want to sign a lease today, it's not necessarily something that like, while they have the intent to do that, is pragmatic because of this whole process. So I'm very confident that once this gets underway, that everybody will be biting at the bit to get in there because it is location, location, location. And that's amazing location, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Wade? Thanks.
Also, I think Mr. Pepperoni has a letter from Bill Graff that is kind of a surrogate letter, supportive letter of this process. So that's true, so. I just, I never saw the letter.
Mr. Ardmore has the letter.
Somebody's got the letter. I just, but anyways.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, return it to the Planning Commission for a discussion and then a motion?
Motion to approve item seven. Motion to recommend.
Your motions have gotten increasingly terse and.
It's all written out there, item seven. We know what it is, right?
All right.
As these things get longer and longer in paragraph style, I read less and less of it, so.
All right, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. I'm always in favor of more eating places.
Especially in neighborhoods.
Yeah, especially in neighborhoods. Great. Okay, before we move on to items eight and nine, it's 9/11. We only, at our next Neighborhood Planning Commission, we only have two items?
Two, maybe three.
Two, maybe three? Who would feel good about continuing these items, these last two items, to the next Planning Commission meeting?
I would feel great about that.
Yes.
If, if planning staff doesn't have any heartburn over that.
You know, these are items based on, you know, the front rear yard setbacks that the council recently added on. And I, they're pending legislation, so I don't think anything's jeopardized by continuing it at all.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on item eight and then one on item nine to continue to the June 28th meeting.
I move that we continue item number eight to June 28th.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of continuing this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine.
I'll move that we continue item number nine to the June 28th Planning Commission hearing.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Leonard, second. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second, all those in favor? Aye.
How long is the camera on?